2022 Town of Poughkeepsie zoning board of appeals meeting. Could all please rise with pleasantries. All right, this is a hybrid format, so people are welcome here in person or by Zoom or telephone. All the information is on our website. The procedure here in the zoning board of appeals is that there's an agenda up here if anyone wants to see where they are. The applicant comes up. Any testimony before our board is sworn. The applicant provides information about what they want to do, and the public is welcome to come up and make any comments about the application. When the record's closed, we'll go on to the next person, or next application on the agenda. At the end, when we reach the end of the agenda, we'll go into a deliberation process where no more testimony or evidence is taken, but we'll all deliberate and come to a decision. You can all wait for the end of the evening to find out the decision, or you can call the zoning administrator in the morning and find out the results. So that brings us to item number one on the agenda, McDonald's. Is there someone here for that applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Keith Brown for the applicant.
Okay.
Mr. Brown, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do, but I'm also my attorney.
Okay.
And an officer of the court. So, good evening, Chairman members of the board. For the applicant Keith Brown, welcome to McDonald's in Laleo. Page 538, Port Hall Road, Street 301 West, Melville, New York, 11747. I'm here this evening simply for the McDonald's sign variance application to add a monument sign for the proposed McDonald's pad site restaurant at the Hudson Plaza Shopping Center located at 2585 South Road in Poughkeepsie, New York. With me this evening, I have a few experts. Mr. Alex Lemay is, I know on Zoom call, he's with Fuller Engineering, our civil engineer. And we also have a representative of the applicant from McDonald's Corp. as well. We have reviewed the town's June 8 staff report, and we have no objection, particularly as it relates to the recommendation on page three, and I'd like to just read that into the record. It says, "Reconnaissance, for the reasons stated above, our department recommends the following: two freestanding sign colon that the board," sorry, "that the board denied freestanding sign. However, if the board is inclined to grant this variance, it should be permitted with the caveat that this variance applies to freestanding buildings on the plaza property and not businesses within the enclosed plaza. In addition, this sign could be redesigned as a landscape monument style sign, no higher than six to eight feet in height. A sign of this height would be more visible to potential patrons traveling along Route 9." So, just to clarify, McDonald's had revised its plan from the original 20-foot-high monument sign months ago, and is proposing a very nicely-appointed monument sign with some cultured stone at its base at a height of no more than eight feet. We're here tonight to really clarify the situation with the proposed monument sign. Just by way of background for maybe the members of the public of the board that may not be familiar with the application, on March 14th of this year, we appeared before this board and was granted variance relief for the McDonald's restaurant, including relief for three wall signs. Those wall signs did not include the eastern elevation. They did, however, include the golden arch on the south elevation, McDonald's wordmark on the south elevation, that's the entrance side of the restaurant, and then finally, a golden arch on the west elevation of the restaurant, which actually faces the shopping center and the supermarket. So, as I said, none of the wall signs face the public roadway, and as such, there is no identification of the McDonald's restaurant on Route 9 or South Road whatsoever. This being a retail establishment, you can understand how important it is for McDonald's to have some identification on South Road, which I'll explain in a moment. Thereafter, on April 11th, our office appeared before the board in connection with the proposed monument sign. The board adjourned the application, requested that written proof be provided from the property owner indicating that a panel sign could not be added to the existing shopping center marquee signs, which are located on both driveways, one just south of the proposed pad site and one at the central entrance north of the pad site. So, we were asked to provide, and we did provide on May 24th, 2022, a letter from the property owner's attorney informing the board that McDonald's panel cannot be added to the existing shopping center marquee, as there was no room available for that space because the marquee sign was designed for the occupants of the shopping center and not for the additional pad site. We submit that the variance for the floor of the monument sign is absolutely necessary for the McDonald's restaurant, as it lacks any signs along Route 9 and will not be visible to the public. Apparently, there is simply no identification for the use to motorists on Route 9, and the shopping center is rather large and deep. It's a 22-acre shopping center with approximately 1,100 feet of frontage with the two aforementioned marquee signs on both entrances to the center. The monument sign is very necessary for motorists to see, especially below the trees that line South Road on that side, and slow down, put their directional on, and make a safe turn into the shopping center. Therefore, the sign is necessary. Moreover, the monument sign is not precedent-setting because it is for a freestanding pad site and not a business in the existing shopping center, and therefore will not lead to the proliferation of signs in the town, as was mentioned, and the concern of the planning department director of municipal development, Mr. Michael Welty. And finally, there are other examples of shopping centers in the nearby area which had actually pylon signs, not monument signs. So, we have reduced the height of it. We're under the trees. It'll be a nicely-appointed sign. It is useful, it's necessary, and we feel that there's a basis for it. Specifically, in response to the planning department memo, I'll go through each of the points that was referenced. In terms of the character of the neighborhood, I'll just read through this. "Granting a variance for the McDonald's monument sign will not change the established commercial character along Route 9, nor be a detriment to any of the nearby properties." I talked about the uniqueness of the Hudson Plaza. I'll just point out that east of the property is Crossroad Plaza, which includes the Stop and Shop supermarket and the Barnes &amp; Noble. Also located across Route 9 is the Wendy's, which includes a freestanding pole sign, and a Dunkin' Donuts, which has a freestanding pole sign. Both of those are pad sites. North of McDonald's lease area are the Hudson Plaza parking spaces. Further north is a gas station with a convenience store. South of the McDonald's lease area are additional Hudson Plaza parking fields. Further south is an urgent care facility and a gas lane station. And to the west of the McDonald's lease area are Hudson Plaza parking fields, followed by tenant space. And I note also for the record that there is a nearby Chase Bank that has also a freestanding pylon sign along Route 9. Finally, just with regard to that, the character issue, the board can now retell at any determination to the facts of this case to permit the third freestanding sign at the property. As I mentioned, the monument sign will be a maximum of eight feet. The property has a lot area of 26.5 acres and substantially oversized for the zoning district. Third, the third freestanding sign will not create an abundance of sign. The property extends about 1,100 feet along Route 9, where only five of their feet of frontage is required. The next prong of the five-part test is the benefit to the applicant. The purpose of this application is to communicate the use of the property at the McDonald's restaurant should pass as by along Route 9. Relief for the board is necessary to achieve the benefit, which is critical to the operation of this restaurant. As previously stated, the McDonald's restaurant has no wall signs on Route 9, and the property owner has no room on the marquee sign for the McDonald's use. And the letter to this point was submitted to the board on May 24th. The next prong of the five-point test is whether the variance is substantial. As previously stated, the board can now retell at any approval to limit its potential precedents to impact. First, the monument sign will only be eight foot high and will be within the building envelope and will be surrounded by landscape along Route 9. Second, the property is unique as its oversized 26 acres where a minimum of 50 acres is required, as approximately 1,100 feet of frontage along Route 9 where a minimum of 500 is required. And the applicant is also tempted to remove the need for the variance, but has not been able to obtain any space because there is none available on the marquee sign on either entrances to the shopping center. We also note that throughout this review process, the applicant is modifying the application to eliminate any potential impact that it may have. As noted by the county planning commission, just want to read that for a second. Stated in the recommendation, number two, freestanding sign, similar to what the planning department indicated, that if the board is inclined to grant this application, it should only be permitted within the caveat that this variance applies to the freestanding signs, sorry, the freestanding buildings on the plaza property and not the businesses within the enclosed plaza, et cetera, et cetera. Further, the applicant has previously agreed to continue to agree to any approval to include any condition that the variance may apply only to freestanding pad sites within the Hudson Plaza Shopping Center and not businesses within the enclosed area. Just the last two points, and I'll sum up. The impact on the physical or environmental conditions of self-created hardship, as provided in the secret deck and the June 8, 2022 town staff report, the monument sign variance will not have a significant adverse impact or an impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district within it lies. And to the extent that the variance is self-created, as this board is abundantly aware, New York state law is clear that this factor is not controlling alone. In light of the balancing of the other area variance factors in favor of the applicant, this factor, though, is not being determined as a benefit to the applicant outweighs the possible detriment to the community, as noted that this is a very robust and developed commercial corridor within the town of Poughkeepsie. So with that, we'd like to answer any questions that the board may have, or that of Mr. Alex Lemay, our civil engineer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. You submitted, or someone submitted, a photograph showing the proposed sign along Route 9?
Yes, sir.
The copy I have is kind of hard to discern. Do you have one that you can present, that you can share on a screen?
I asked Alex Lemay if we can invite him in and allow him to share his screen. He can pull it up here.
Can everyone see that? Is that up on the screen?
Right, but I'm looking for the one, there's a depiction of the sign along Route 9?
Is this the one you're talking about, Mr. Chairman?
That's the one.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. And so where, can you indicate now where the building would be? Is there a way for you to mark that?
Yeah, it's a bit difficult to see because of the tree coverage here, but the building is generally back here. You can kind of see it in the background a little bit.
Okay.
A little blurred, but yeah, there it is.
That's, so the building is in that depiction?
Yes, you can see it in the background.
The southeast corner of the shopping center, across from the, I believe it's the Price Stopper supermarket, right?
Okay. And when do you suspect that it'd start building?
We'd like to start construction, yeah, heading towards the fall. We're still trying to nail that down, but ideally, we would be in construction by September.
And when do you expect it to be open?
The goal would be to complete and open by the end of the year.
With regard to the letter we got from the attorney representing the property of the rest of the mall there, can you submit any correspondence between the two parties for us?
I believe I can, but I've just tried.
I just have the one letter, so if you have whatever you, it's just to whom it may concern, pylon sign.
Yeah, I believe there was a phone call from the representative from McDonald's to the property owner.
Hold on just a second, if you would. All right, go ahead, sorry.
No, I was just saying it was actually a phone call from the McDonald's representative to the property owner, and based on that, the letter was generated. I don't know if there was any real written correspondence.
Okay. All right, those are our questions I have. Kristine?
Yeah, my only question was about there being no room on either of the existing monument signs, because I saw, it appears to be there's room on both of them, so I guess.
Right, and that's why I.
I guess the letter that Mr. Chairman had requested, maybe that'll help to clarify it.
Did you see it?
Well, it just said, as Paul said, to whom it may concern that.
Right, and the reason for that is because that spot on the marquee sign, so it's not really a, I think you said monument sign, it's, we refer to it as a marquee sign because it has all of the other uses in the shopping center with smaller signs on it. And all of those areas are late, so to speak, to lease space in the shopping center. So in other words, you know, unit one has space one on the marquee sign, unit two has space two on the marquee sign. So each and every one of those slots on the marquee sign has been allocated for, with reference to potential uses. So if there is a opening right now, it's probably because there's a vacancy in the shopping center. And that's one of the things that I know McDonald's is hopeful, is going to turn it around as well as the property owner, that by having a McDonald's there, it's going to bring more people and, you know, to the center that will provide a little bump in terms of, you know, the turnover of potential customers, not only to the McDonald's, but also to the different uses in the shopping center. Typically, it's usually a good, you know, boost for those businesses.
Mr. Brown, did you tell me also that the lease between McDonald's and the landlord actually states that there's no, that there will not be room on the pylon sign, or there will not be an opportunity to be on the pylon sign?
Yes, that's correct.
So, I've seen that in other standard leases. I take the attorney at his word, but if the board wants, we can make that a condition that I verify that the lease says that there's no opportunity to go on the multi-tenant sign. I leave that to the board.
Okay. Art?
Do you, excuse me, do you have a picture of what's actually going to be on that sign? Can you show us, show me what that sign is going to have on it, other than the M?
Yeah, that was the first one you showed, right?
Yeah.
So it's not going to just say McDonald's, you need Wi-Fi and all that other information on there, you think?
Yes, in a typical monument sign, does note the Wi-Fi and the 24 hours. They do have a version of the sign that's, I'll box it in right here, that, you know, a monument sign that would just be the McDonald's logo. Typically, McDonald's likes to advertise the Wi-Fi and things like that, but there is a version of the sign that is kind of a, I'll say, not as wide monument sign without the additional panels.
Okay, and what is the, what is the size of that sign in total? You said it's eight feet tall, but what's the width?
It's, no, the sign, the base itself is about two, two and a half feet, so the sign itself is five by 12, 60 feet.
And let me ask you this, okay, another question. Over on the right, you've got available panels. Does that mean you're going to interchange those panels?
Yeah, they're interchangeable, but yeah, they're interchangeable, but once the panels are set, they usually don't swap them out.
Okay. Last question for right now. If you could only get the M, how severe would that, impact would that be to you?
I think it would be pretty impactful for McDonald's. They like to advertise that they do have Wi-Fi. It's not a play place at this site, but they do like to advertise that, you know, the McDonald's delivery and things like that. That's just kind of part of the branding, and since it's a brand new store on the corridor, I think it's important to them to be able to advertise those things. So that's kind of, Keith, I don't know if you have any other color to add from McDonald's perspective?
No, I'll echo what Alex said. You know, they want to make sure that this store is successful by advertising the different, you know, features that they have at the store. It helps, you know, allow motorists, you know, to understand, so it's way, you know, if somebody is working and they need some connectivity, you know, they could go there and, you know, get something to eat, something to drink, and then make use of their Wi-Fi that's being done at so many other establishments. So, you know, the Mid-Cafe is a big push by McDonald's, obviously. It's their recent brand, and it's really the driver of a lot of things that they're doing, so it is part of their overall branding. They like people to come, you know, similar to coffee shops and whatnot, you know, and basically sit and work, you know, and something while they're, while they're going through their day.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Simone, you can ask a question.
Is this sign that you're showing us considered a landscape sign? Or is this prior to redesign or other ideas?
We consider it a monument sign. There would be landscaping proposed on a landscape plan planted around the monument sign, just to kind of dress it up and make it look a little bit nicer, but generally, we just consider this a kind of a low, a low elevation monument sign.
I'm concerned about the location of the sign and it impacting visibility as you're trying to pull out onto Route 9. Where is it going to be located?
Can you pull up the site plan and show? It's further, far enough away from the south entrance. It's kind of, it's closer to the southern side of the center, but it's far enough away.
So, yes, this is the, this is the ingress to the south of the site that comes off of Route 9 here. See the building kind of in the center here. The monument sign would be off on the woods, it's a little easier to see, right here.
And Keith and Alex, that was on the planning board, on the site plan that was submitted to the planning board, right? And they had no issues with site distance when the engineer looked at it?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, it's not located with the site triangle at all, and there's plenty of visibility for cars who are coming out from that side street to make a right-hand turn safely onto Route 9.
Okay, thank you.
No questions? Mary?
What would you say to your customers at drive-through?
So, as a result of COVID, McDonald's has seen a spike, as you can imagine, for drive-through traffic. It's somewhere in the neighborhood of about, used to be 65%, it's more closer to like 75, 80%.
All right, that's all.
Diane?
Have you, I mean, I drove by there several times from several angles today, once again.
Diana, can you grab a mic?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. I have to sit in a different seat so I can have one right in front of me, or I won't remember. But would you consider lowering the actual base by a foot or so? Because I realize six to seven months of the year, you really will not see the top portion of that sign the higher you set it. It might be less congested in the tree growth if it could go down a foot.
Yeah, no, I understand the comment, you know, it has to do with the crown of the trees that surround it. I thought that that was enough room to fit under the crown of those trees, but if not, we can't just make it too low because of the landscaping that Alex was describing before, you know, we don't want to block the sign with the landscaping.
What I would say is that I think we could keep the base to 18 inches. We could keep the base to a foot and a half, and then with the five feet on top of that, that'll put it about six and a half feet. I think that would be a good kind of elevation from a monument sign perspective. This way, it's not too high to get blocked by the trees, but at least it gives some semblance of visibility for motorists on Route 9.
Yeah, I think even the six months, six inches would make a difference over a two foot.
Yeah, no problem.
And I also would like to comment on the landscaping. I think I would have to say, even though I love landscaping, that will soften a project, less is best in that spot with so many trees, but that's all.
Yeah, it would probably be just be some ground cover, something, just to spruce up the, around the sign.
That's all. Tony?
I have no questions.
Okay, anyone from the public who would just comment on this application?
If you're on the Zoom, you can also unmute yourself. Press star six if you're on a phone to unmute yourself.
I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? One was a favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to item number two, Verizon Wireless Small Cell Wireless Communication Facilities. Is there someone here for that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Scott Olson. I'm on Zoom tonight.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Mr. Olson, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay, so what's new?
So what's new, okay, so what we have is, there's a tech memo that Mike Musso provided back in middle of April or so, and we provided a response on May 4th. And so I'll just quickly summarize, you know, what Mike requested and how we responded, if that's okay?
That'd be fine, yeah.
I'll run that pretty quickly. One of the first comments was, you know, there was some confusion about the application forms, and we provided some updated and revised forms, and just clarified why we answered in certain ways that we did. For instance, one of the forms talks about a special use permit application. We don't need that here, we just need a use variance from the CBA, as well as a site plan approval from the planning board, so we clarified that in the supplemental materials. Mike suggested that some additional information be provided on the site plans, including some details about the specific antennas. Wanted to see the antenna radiation patterns, so that information was provided on the revised site plans. We provided photosense of what this proposal will look like. As you may recall, it's a 40-foot pole structure. It's going to be painted black to match the existing light poles, and on top, there will be what we call a cantenna. And what it really is, is just this little cylinder-type structure. Inside, there will be three small antennas. We're using three antennas here to maximize the efficiency of the site, since there's so much traffic in the area, as I'm sure you're all aware of. So we provided those photo simulations. I think in one of the simulations, we also included an alteration to try to make it look like a light pole by having like a light pole arm come out. Obviously, you can take a look at that and decide for yourselves whether that's something you like or do not like. My preference was, I didn't think it totally worked, I understand why it was requested, but again, that's just my personal preference. We don't care either way. It's up to the board, obviously. So, another big issue was, that Mike had raised, was, well, what about putting this antenna structure on the roof of the ShopRite building? So we had our RF engineer provide a response, and then he followed up with a supplemental response, just to clarify what he was talking about, and unfortunately, he's out of state tonight, so he just, wasn't available to be here. But I know he spoke with Mr. Musso on the issue maybe last week, and what he had said basically was, if you put this cantenna structure on the roof of ShopRite, you're effectively minimizing the effectiveness of the site, because one of the antennas would be facing in a direction that it really provides no use for us. By having it in the location we're proposing, we get to have that antenna face the ShopRite building and the other developed area, and that's one of the reasons why we're doing this site. There's just so much traffic in the area, we need all three antennas or three sectors to be effectively and efficiently working. So that's one of the reasons why he didn't think that the ShopRite building was really a viable alternative. Mr. Musso asked about a more detailed study concerning the emissions, the RF emissions, and while we have something in the record that confirms that we will be fully compliant with the FCC guidelines, we did order that report, and I don't, I haven't seen it come back yet. Once we get it, we will definitely provide it. But I can tell you, I've never seen a report come back with an antenna at that height ever not be consistent with the guidelines, but obviously. But obviously, I will let the report speak for itself once we get a copy of it. And I think the last question that Mike had was, will the utility trenching impact that soil management area that is, it's a couple hundred feet away? And the answer is no. We're not going to trench into any of the DEC soil management area. We're not allowed to, obviously, without getting permission. But we're not going to disturb that area because we know that it was previously, I think it was called landfill number six for the site center. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions that the board may have or that Mike may have. Thank you.
All right, I think, Mr. Musso, do you have any comments about?
Yes, members of the board, thanks for having me.
Mr. Musso, may I just swear to you in? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, so I'd like to run through a quick overview and possibly share a couple things on my screen. Tech memo from us, which will be the second and final memo on this application, will be submitted later this week. Just to give you a background of our work so far, we conducted a site visit with the applicant's engineers and Mike Welty on March 21st. The memo that Mr. Olson was referring to was actually a completeness memorandum and information request. We've received information May 5th, May 17th, which indeed, we did receive that supplemental RF emissions statement. And last week, there was a filing to this board with regards to some additional information on, I'll call it an alternate location analysis utilizing the supermarket roof. Our tech memo is going to follow what we did back in January, if you recall, for a similar application at Raymond Avenue. That was also in front of this board for a use permit. The difference here is a couple of things. This is with regards to the Historic Revitalization Development District, 21030. In that guidance, there is no prescription for wireless facilities. And this is the first being proposed within that district, which as you all know, is coming together, following architectural guidelines and smart site planning. Our tech memo is going to give you a little bit of background. It's going to summarize the application filings. With the application materials that I've received up to last week, I feel that the application is complete and ready for this board and I think the planning board in the future to consider decisions on. I'll talk a bit about the need for this small cell site. Verizon is proposing this small cell, a single antenna, as an infill based on high call traffic and capacity issues in its existing network around Route 9, around Maris College, and all the commercial and vehicular traffic. They provided some updated capacity charts of those existing cell sites. And with what I understand about the build-out of the HRDD, I think if things stayed static, there would be even more of a need. But I do feel that what's been provided in terms of capacity need would justify facility. And I believe a small cell would make sense at this property. We are looking at the alternate location on the rooftop of ShopRite, and I do want to share a site plan with that. Unlike Raymond Avenue, that was looking for really 360-degree coverage, there is 360-degree coverage provided by the antenna proposed here. But if you consider north to be zero degrees, the way this would be positioned would be radiation at 60 degrees, at 180 degrees facing due south, and at 300 degrees facing towards Route 9. As I'll show you in a minute, and I think the applicant had responded to our question, going up on the roof would be problematic in some ways as compared to the 40-foot freestanding pole. There'd be shadowing on the very large rooftop if you were to site in the middle. And if you went off to one of the sides, you just wouldn't cover the way a freestanding pole would. So I'll discuss that in my tech memo, but I feel that what's being proposed now, a single antenna, 40 feet, does make sense in terms of capacity relief and in terms of the approach by Verizon. On the RF emissions levels, and we've reviewed a number of sites, and we've also looked at real data from active cell sites around different communities. The radio frequency emissions reviewer, I think, used appropriate methods. He did plug in the right power levels and frequencies. Remember, a single antenna is relatively low power as compared to a cell tower site that might have six, nine, or 12 antennas in total. The punchline is that the RF emissions levels are modeled to be about 1% of the permissible for general public areas. Unlike the one I reviewed a few months ago, which considered possible rooftop access and being closer to the antenna face itself, that wouldn't be the case here with a freestanding pole up 40 feet. I think one of the key things about our tech memo is offering some comments on aesthetics. This would be a steel pole, maybe not unlike the existing LED street poles that are established around ShopRite and in that district. I'll show you an option about a down-facing light for the equipment area at the base. I think that's up to the board's discretion. I agree with the applicant that that would be up to the board's discretion. I think some things could be worked on and prescribed, and I'll offer some options. There is a 10-foot by 10-foot fenced area that encompasses the pole base, which is about two feet at the base, and it tapers upward to about six inches in diameter at the top. The fencing, I think, should definitely consider the HRDD guidance that was provided to me. So you probably remember seeing examples of that about brick or different wood type of texture. I think that's something the applicant would be able to agree on. Landscaping is proposed. There's five evergreens in the area that exist where the small cell is proposed. The applicant's providing five additional, which I believe makes sense. And one of the options that I did look at would be to install a flag, for example, a US flag on the pole. It's not something that I'm openly recommending to the board, but I think it could be considered by the ZBA and the planning board. This is a little bit bulkier, a little bit taller than a typical flag pole. There'd be maintenance and possibly uplighting that would be required as per US flag protocols. So if I may, just share my screen with a couple points. Hopefully, you could see my screen.
We do.
All right, so this is from the revised drawings. The drawings are updated before their early needs to middle based on some comments that we had. You can see here where I'm circling is a proposed cell site at scale, the 10-foot by 10-foot compound. And you can see the existing ShopRite area. So the point of placing an antenna in the middle or even on one side, unless you went way high up in the air, which I don't think anybody wants to do, the concern is shadowing. So if you're looking at going southward, I mentioned 180 degrees of north is one of the antenna patterns, you would get shadowing by placing something in the middle, really in all directions. And the same if you went up to one edge, you'd also have some shadowing. And what I mean by shadowing is, if an antenna is placed, say, at the very north end of a building like this, just think in the cross-section of the geometry, if you raise that antenna up, say, six or eight feet above the roof line, it's just not going to see south. That signal is effectively going to be blocked by this long length of building space on the top. Just to show you another view of what's being proposed. So this is a little bit more of a zoom in. ShopRite building would be off to the right in the existing parking lot. So this is an area of existing grassed swath. Yes, it was confirmed by the applicant that any excavation, and there would be underground utilities of fiber and electric, it's not part of the New York State DEC Site Management Program of Soil Disturbance. We have worked on sites that would consider it, but it's kind of nice here that that is not a consideration. Just to look at at a cross-section detail. So this would be the new pole. Some existing or proposed landscaping. Six-foot-high fence would include and contain the support equipment. As I'll show you on the photo simulation, the applicant has given an option for a light a little bit taller than the halfway point, so maybe 20 or 25 feet up. That would downlight any nighttime visits that are needed into the compound. So what would this look like? So these are simulations that have been provided. We requested them for this application. They were not provided initially. But if you're in the ShopRite parking lot looking southward, Route 9 and Maris are in the distance off to the right. There's a cluster of some existing trees and a utility stub pole that exists in that area. So this is what the compound would look like from that view. That's existing conditions, and now the proposed conditions. There's a little option with that light I was talking about that would downlight and only be on for nighttime visits when needed. There'd be a timer and a shut-off with that, so it's not something that would be lit all of the time. One of our recommendations is to have everything painted black, including the cantenna, antenna at the very top. And the fencing, I think is something that we could work on based on the architectural guidelines for the district. So here's another view, I guess near the Starbucks area, the Winslow Gate Road entrance is on the right, ShopRite is obviously in the background here. So we're looking just to the left of the stop sign. That's existing conditions. And that would be a proposed condition. So on that side, the existing trees look like they're going to remain, and some additional trees around them. And that's with that downward-facing light. And this is a little bit more of a distance view, just going backwards towards Route 9 from that previous photo I showed you. Much less visible, no coincidence, it's due to the distance. But I think one of the important things that struck me when I visited the site is looking at some of the LED lighting that's been installed throughout the HRDD and some of the commercial development that's coming online. I think the pole can be designed to conform relatively well. It would be a round pole. It would have an antenna at the very top. There's no tower lighting or any special lighting that would be associated with the small cell, so that wouldn't necessarily be an issue. Let me see if I have anything else that I could get through here. Hard to see on this, but this is part of the supplemental analysis and discussion I had last week with the radio frequency engineer. The set of arrows at the left is the proposed site. Set of arrows at the right is the ShopRite roof. You could see the antenna patterns of 30, I'm sorry, 60, 180 facing south.
Can you enlarge that?
Yes. Yeah, it is kind of hard to see. I think with me showing you the actual drawing of the, or the site plan with the ShopRite building footprint as compared to this, it's much more effective. This is obviously an old aerial base. But you get the idea, maybe. This is a very focused area of coverage tying into the Maris site that is on the bottom of the screen. There's a couple other cell sites in the area. This is a very high-traffic site as provided by the capacity information, looking at real data of that particular cell site. So these arrows of how the antenna is oriented are definitely important. If something was put on the ShopRite roof, the antenna would be much less effective. Again, unless raising well high to try to eliminate any shadowing. And I don't feel that's something that the town would be interested in. But the idea is the same three patterns of antennas, how that nested antenna would propagate in three directions to connect with the existing sites. Having an open-air site off that ShopRite building would be effective. These two lobes at 60 and 180 would certainly cover the southeast area better than with something on the ShopRite roof. So we'll talk about the things I ran through, the capacity and the need, the alternate location analysis, the RF emissions. We'll have some comments for aesthetics, and then a summary of findings and recommendations at the very end. I think that's all I had to present tonight. So be happy to try to address any questions that you might have.
And Mike, we would have those things for next month, well in advance of next month's meeting, is that fair?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Anyone have any questions about this? You want to review the new material for next month? All right, so I'll open it up to any comments from the public. I'm going to ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone? Come on up.
Yeah.
Can I introduce myself, please? My name is Gina Liberti. My name is Gina Liberti.
Ms. Liberti, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it is.
Go ahead.
So a couple of things jumped out at me. Your presentation was very detailed and very organized, but I don't hear anything that seeks to in any way protect people from the health concerns associated with this radiation. In fact, in research from the 70s of 2G, 3G, 4G has been out there, and now 5G is even more powerful. And so the first question I would have, and you don't have to answer this because I think I know the answer already, but in what way is Verizon prepared to either pay for or provide protective devices for people who are going to be interacting with these energies? The second thing that jumped out at me is the fact that you're following FCC guidelines, and I'm getting a sense that you are not aware of the fact that on the efforts, on behalf of the efforts of Robert Kennedy, the US District Court of Appeals found against the FCC because their guidelines were considered to be arbitrary and capricious, that the FCC neglected to review more than 11,000 documents showing harm from currently accepted levels, and that their guidelines are 25 years outdated. So if you're following FCC guidelines, you're 25 years behind. Other issues that I'm very concerned about is the fact that while there has been a tremendous amount of research looking at the health effects of this radiation, there are two important points that need to be made. One is, when you look at the neurological involvement, cardiovascular, and other organ system involvement, these are the kinds of problems that many people are experiencing here in America, and nobody is asking whether or not this is in some way associated with this type of radiation. I went online before the meeting tonight and found a 2020 study that said that this radiation actually enhances environmental toxins that are associated with many of these chronic diseases. So it actually worsens these diseases that are already prevalent. And the fact that nobody knows that this radiation is adding to it is what makes this whole situation so incredibly insidious. For me to go ahead and just even talk about the fact that property values dropped 30% seems to pale in comparison to the health effects of all of this. So really, the question is, in what way, and I know that Verizon is shielded from liability, so they're not expected or responsible to pay for any problems, which means if so... so they're not expected or responsible to pay for any problems, which means if somebody decides that they're going to sue, they're going to go after the town zoning board, and they're going to go after, you know, town politicians, because they're going to want to find somebody to fix what's broken here. So really, the question is, is Verizon prepared to come up with protective devices? Are they willing to pay fair market value for people who want to leave the area and then pay for their moving expenses? And I think the answer to all of that is no.
Okay.
But anyway, you get the idea, guys. I wonder how you sleep at night working for a company that hurts people for profit.
Mr. Chair, can I respond briefly to the District Court? I don't know how much this board is aware of that particular litigation in that case that went on. It is true that the court found that the FCC's actions were arbitrary and capricious in that court decision. However, what it did as a result of that was sent the FCC back and said, "You guys need, what you did was not sufficient. You need to look at this and do it again, and come back to the court with more information." And up until the point where the FCC comes back to the court with more information and then the court makes a decision on that, we are still bound by the original determination. So while it's absolutely true that the FCC, that the court told the FCC they were arbitrary and capricious, it did not have the effect of eliminating the current prohibition that this board is not allowed to take into account the health effects of RF radiation, provided that the applicant can demonstrate that the radiation meets the FCC levels. And that expresses no opinion about whether the FCC levels are right or completely outdated or anything like that, but there is that note in the statute which prohibits this court, this board, from taking into effect the health effects. Now, we are perfectly free to discuss, you know, aesthetics and other things, but when we're specifically focusing on the health effects, regardless of what your personal beliefs may be as to whether this is unhealthy or not, and any other concerns, you, this board's decision would be invalidated if it used as a basis the fact that the, it may be hazardous to human health. And if there were a challenge by Verizon or any of the carriers that come before this board, mention of the health effects and the RF effects in this board's decision would be basis alone, regardless of whether there were other variations and reasons to do this to invalidate this board's decision. So I just, as a matter, and I, you know, I would be happy to talk to the opponents and the RF people because I think there are paths forward where, you know, there's probably mutual ground, but when it comes to the RF health effects, this board is prohibited currently by federal statute from considering those things. So, thank you.
Thank you. In all that, is there any other comments from anybody in the public? Come on. Just state your name, and again, if you limit it to three minutes.
Sure.
And again, if you're just going to reiterate anything that a prior speaker said, you just indicate that so everybody gets a chance to speak.
Okay, my name is Nicholas Cachinos.
Mr. Cachinos, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. I'm here today to ask that the town not only reject the proposed tower by Verizon at 10-50 Winslow Gate Road, but to draft the telecom ordinances that are desperately needed as the 5G rollout continues to attack all forms of life. The higher power levels used on these towers are not needed for telecommunications, yet the telecom lobby, the largest in history, dwarfing even Big Pharma, continues to use its deep pockets and sphere of influence to find towns whose codes and ordinances are either weak or non-existent. The FCC guidelines are outdated by decades and are left intentionally vague, guiding only thermal effects. In a nutshell, according to the FCC, all frequencies are deemed safe so long as they do not cause you a physical burn on the skin in the short term. Change is not going to come from the FCC, whose five commissioners, including the current chairwoman, all come from a telecom background, as former executives, CEOs, and lawyers appointed by the current president, with one FCC commissioner even calling himself a 5G crusader. This town has been saturated with these towers and smaller antennas on existing infrastructures. Using AntennaSearch.com, I found 86 towers and 87 antennas within a three-mile radius from my home. Only nine of these were registered. When construction finished on the tower at Poughkeepsie Day School in 2019, I began to experience symptoms associated with EMF radiation exposure, including ears ringing, headaches, dizziness, nausea, extreme fatigue, brain fog, short-term memory loss, and skin rashes. Last year, I began using this meter here to record the output of these towers. Late March, I was able to take readings at Poughkeepsie Day School when Verizon linemen were literally on the tower updating their antennas for 5G. I recorded average readings of 3,250 microwatts per square meter, peaks at 15,000 to 17,000, and a maximum reading of 58,000 microwatts per square meter. Despite the warnings posted on the tower's base which instructed linemen to wear protective gear, all they had on were hard hats and orange vests. This is at a school where young children are spending the majority of their day. Up the road at the town water department on Cedar Avenue, the 180-foot tower with four rows of antennas directly across the street from homes on both sides. Measurements in front of these homes were, on average, 318 to 600 microwatts per square meter, peaks between 2230 to 2870, and a max reading of 4270. At the water department itself, 100 feet from the tower where town employees work, the averages were whopping 7,870 to 9,090 microwatts per square meter, peaks at 160 to 204,000, and a max reading of 264,000. While these towers are very noticeable and obvious, many don't realize that even on the smaller antennas placed on existing infrastructure, like the one Verizon placed right in the Rite Aid parking lot on Vassar Road, have a huge effect. They are close to the ground and right on top of parking spaces and even a public mailbox a few feet away. Measurements-
Do you want to wrap it up?
Sure. Measurements I took there yesterday were as follows. Averages were 3,000 to 7,320 microwatts per square meter, with peaks at over 100,000 to 210,000, and a maximum reading of 512,000 microwatts per square meter. Measurements of this magnitude, when the Bioinitiative Report has a limit of five microwatts per square meters in outdoor spaces, this is a crime. Thank you.
And I'd like anyone who wants to submit their statements in writing for all the documents and data that you want to introduce, that's fine also. Anybody else who wants to speak?
First of all, hi, everybody.
Hi. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do. The first thing was that when I went to some data on the internet based on 20 Tucker Drive, the 300-foot tower, there was no contact information. There were incorrect phone numbers for the owner of the antenna, and I believe that the town should have easy access to this frequency information as a matter of public record. Alice had a hard time finding out the information that she wanted, and I was told I had to submit a FOIL request in order to get it. However, that said, the new one that's proposed for 1050 Winslow Gate Road is supposedly going to go up and perhaps beyond 3750 megahertz. And that is the same as you guys approved for the Arlington Town Center, and that is part of the 5G spectrum of Verizon. Scott Olson, the attorney, actually said on video, he said, "It's not." The Bob Evans, who was the engineer, said, "It's 3750." And when you do the research, and I've supplied that to the board, it is 5G. So we can't really listen to the attorneys similar to what's going on in our country because attorneys work for the applicants. So if you're taking words that attorneys say to you even under oath, sorry, that's not going to cut it. So there's that. In addition, I'm looking at the fact that the way the radiation falls is, again, 146 feet to 1,000 feet. Where is the children's home at Poughkeepsie in relation to that? Where's Starbucks? Where's Applebee's? And where are the people that work in those places of business, where are they going to be health-wise in a little bit? You tell me. You can't know because you're not looking at data and you're not understanding that insurance authorities classify 5G as high risk. Okay, so what are we going to start? Legal experts are starting to request that localities get insurance to cover health damages before rolling out 5G in neighborhoods or in proximity to neighborhoods. Okay? Are we going to allow a shell company? If we get insurance, if we're lucky enough to do that, are we going to get it from a shell company? Maybe, hopefully, we're not stupid enough to do that. And Lisa, I appreciate her actually asking a question because this board never asks questions, and that's because they don't feel qualified to ask a question or to understand if they're being given the correct answer, which is why we need an expert. So when she says that no state, no state or local government or instrumentality can thereby regulate the placement, construction, modification of personal wireless service, yada, 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 you're not looking at the two versions of the TCA Act of 1996. There is one, H R 1555 from Fall of '95, that included the word "operations" in that you couldn't say anything about operations, you know, the telecoms ruled. But in the updated version, which was February 1996, it's called the ultimate version of the TCA, S 652, you look at Section 704, you look at preservation of local zoning authority, you look under general authority, and then you look at limitations, and the word "operations" is removed, meaning it is not a limitation that we have concerning operations. We control, the towns control operations, and if the town wants to do it for health reasons, God bless them. If they want to do it because it doesn't look pretty, God bless them. But Lisa, you have to analyze that, and please take a look-
I need you to really wrap it up.
Because this is where, this is where we're standing right now. We're listening to the telecoms, and they're just, they're working it out their way.
Why don't you draw your comments to the board, and please wrap it up.
That's all I can fit in, unfortunately. Oh, and Qualtech and SiteSafe, they're vendors of Verizon. They're supplying us with safety information, folks. That's a huge conflict of interest. Please, you would, if you were doing a signage thing, you would pay attention to these things.
You're using other people's time now.
So, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for listening to my passionate rant. We need some passion.
All right. Anyone else who wants to come up?
My name is Patricia Nash-Scott.
Hi. Patricia, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
You need to sit down so you can-
I'm totally opposed to this whole idea. It's not well thought out. It's dangerous, and I yield the rest of my time to Michelle Squires.
I'm not really prepared today, I'm not, but it was mapped out in the application for the 1050 Winslow Gate Road, what the frequencies were going to be. And I do want to say, people, and you do understand this because I have submitted this information to you before, but based on the NTP Program Report, okay, which is our agency, it's connected with the NIH and the FDA, heart schwannomas and lung tumors, schwannomas, were actually produced in animals using the same frequencies as what we're going to get on 10 Winslow Gate Road and what we're going to get at the Arlington Town Center at 9-11 Raymond Avenue. So I sent those studies to you. Now, if we have to experiment on human beings to see if they get lung schwannomas in five years or 10 years, okay, there's something called the Nuremberg Code, and that's you can't experiment on people unless you get the firm consent. And basically, that's what we're all doing, that the people that say that, yes, we should have towers, and yes, Verizon, do what you want. So you need to, you need to look at the studies and be smart here, people. All right, we can't wait for 10 years to find out we're harming the mental health of children. That's been documented. We're doing that to them too, aside from lots of other things. Okay? Something is called the Nuremberg Code. SiteSafe has a disclaimer, and they say, "Power values provided by the client and used in the analysis may be greater than what is initially deployed." That's their disclaimer. So one finger's pointing to the other, the engineer is pointing to Qualcomm, Qualcomm's pointing to SiteSafe, SiteSafe's pointing to the FCC, and then we have the FCC that lost its paddle with E H, Environmental Health Trust and Children's Health Defense in that their guidelines are arbitrary and capricious when it concerns anything over six, I think, I think, six gigahertz. So, yeah, we got disclaimers all over the place. iHeart Media has a beautiful disclaimer. You should reread that and then tell your children, if you have some. You tell them, "Don't worry, honey. iHeart Media is going to take care of you if something happens to you as a result of all of this." Thank you, Paul. Thank you, everybody.
Anyone else who wants to comment on this application? In the public, anyone on Zoom?
This is Angela. Through Zoom, can you hear me?
Angela?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I just, you know, I want to start off by saying, I do find it mind-boggling that we'd rather take up everyone's precious time tonight talking over aesthetics as opposed to the true health implications we all know are happening from these high levels of radiation. I will respect the earlier statement, not to go into further details regarding this, but, you know, on the 24-year-olds, I have been horribly harmed from this type of radiation. I mean, that should be reason enough to question the FCC, this extensive group of people that are asking the board to do just that. But at a minimum, I do ask that we consider the many mayor students that would be studying close by. But I guess since it seems like money will get this conversation a little bit further, I think we need to consider that this area is up for high real estate development, and there is clear evidence that real estate value plummets when antennas are put up, clear evidence. So that's immediately not a benefit in favor of this proposal, and I think we need to remember the responsibilities of board members, which is that proposals' benefits must outweigh the detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the community. And I'm really, I'm not seeing a lot of that being cared of here, and it's very shameful that I pay taxes to live in a community where the majority of welfare, I mean, my own welfare is not being considered. But if there's time left, I would denote that to Michelle's needed, otherwise that's the remainder of my remarks.
Michelle, do you want to take advantage of that?
Yes, thank you.
Among the hundreds of emails I probably sent to you guys, maybe you've, maybe you've looked at 1% of them, I don't know. If I had that many emails coming to me, I would be boggled myself, but nonetheless, these things are very important. What I wanted to say was, when we look at need, justify need, because that's what we're doing here, we're going, "Oh, Verizon says we need it, we need it." Drop, you know, I don't even know if we have any records of dropped calls. That's called a drive test. And Mike Welty was sharp in that, he said, "Well, we need to have public necessity proven, evidence." And what we got were propagation maps, pre-charts that can be manufactured. Many of these towns, these towns create ordinances, and Lisa, this is where our power comes from, to demand drive tests. We want evidence of dropped calls. Okay? And that is the way that you justify public need, not by propagation maps. Okay? So, and the other, the other point is that the TCA Act said nothing about data streaming, it spoke about phone calls, not can I download a movie in two seconds and that that should override local controls. Sorry. And- And that's, that's the other piece. Please replay this for yourselves, and if I've made any salient points that you think require more thought, even though, you know, we're not our experts here, get an expert that's protective of the town, not an agent of the applicant, in so many words. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the public who wishes to comment on this application? All right, I don't see anything in, in the audience or on Zoom. So does the applicant or our expert wish to comment on any of the comments that have been made?
Well, Mr. Chairman, this is Scott Olson. Yes, I would love the opportunity to talk because I'm quite frankly shocked at the amount of disinformation that was just presented. So let me try to go through a little bit of it. So in terms of this, there are a couple of commenters have said that the recent court case in the EHT, the FCC, case, said that the guidelines that currently exist are arbitrary and capricious. Those are flat-out incorrect statements. The existing guidelines, as your town attorney stated before, are currently in effect. The court did not in any way, shape, or form express an opinion that the current guidelines are not appropriate. In fact, there's a disclaimer in the court that says just that, that they take no position that the existing guidelines are inappropriate or incorrect. They simply said that they wanted the FCC to expand upon their decision for not updating the guidelines further. The FCC took six years analyzing that, and they decided within the six-year period that they did not see a need to upgrade the guidelines. And as part of the lawsuit, they basically came out and said the majority of information that was presented to them was not even scientific information. Again, the court said, "That's fine, but you need to provide additional information." So I just want to reiterate, if you are hearing from the public that this court case somehow says that the FCC guidelines are arbitrary and capricious, that could not be any further from the truth. That is just, that's just propaganda. It's not true. In terms of, by the way, that the case that's reported, the EHT case, I believe, Michelle, I don't think, I think it was Michelle, I don't think I heard her last name, she talks about cancer. Actually, that case actually comes right out and says that the FCC proved in that case that cancer is not caused by these facilities. So that's, that's in that case specifically. One thing I want to just add is 5G. That term is thrown out a lot, 5G, 5G, I think, Michelle, and again, I don't have your last name, sorry, apologize for not referring to you by that. But you say 5G, 5G. This is 5G in the sense that it's the next generation, but there's so much noise on the internet about 5G and high-frequency 5G. That's referred to generally as the milliwatt frequencies, and it's generally 25, 30,000 gigahertz. So it's a high frequency. We're not proposing that for this site. It's not being proposed at all here. So when someone says 5G, I think you have to really listen to them to see if they understand what they're truly talking about when it comes to 5G. Because in general, 5G is just fifth generation. And that's, that's, that's what it means. We're not proposing, and we've given Mr. Musso the antenna information, and it does not include this milliwatt frequency that is, you know, 25,000, 30,000 gigahertz. And in terms of the town hiring an expert, maybe the, the commenters are not, they don't understand that the town has hired an independent consultant, and that's Mr. Musso. So I think the town has done the right thing. I understand that this is not something that most town, ZBAs, peer members are very familiar with, although we've been before you for a few times now in the last couple of years. But you hired Mr. Musso, I think that's a, that's a great step in the right direction. So I think that is about all I wanted to hit on those comments. Thank you all.
All right. I would like just to add that I think by saying that, you know, working over the years since, since the late 90s for upwards of about 30 to 35 municipalities and not working for the industry, you know, I think, if I got the names, Eric Gino, Nicholas, Michelle, who's even as, I've definitely seen, Tricia, and Angela, you know, and the ZBA, I think for entertaining your opinions and questions, I think it's important to be heard, even though you've heard that this topic of RF emissions and health, for better or for worse, municipal boards like the ZBA here tonight do have their hands tied. And I'm assuming that your advocacy is also being directed in other directions too, right? Honestly, I commend you for that. My background is in public health. I deal, most of my day-to-day looks at exposures in food, soil, drinking water, and things like that. I got involved with radio frequency emission science back in the early 2000s. Your points on the Telecommunication Act are good ones. 1997 was when the first health criteria was promulgated, but I do want to note that over the years, there have been FCC review periods, not only with FCC but with their sister federal agencies, whether it's those that enforce the National Environmental Policy Act, NIPA, but also the EPA. And human and health services have been involved. Some state governments have been involved somewhat. Michelle, I think you noted the National Toxicology Program, NTP. You're right, there are studies. Maybe not peer-reviewed studies, maybe not studies that have specifically emulated the type of exposures that, that we have. I have a cell phone on the cabinet a few feet away. I'm getting something from that. In fact, I, I'm in a dead zone in my house, so I'm probably getting a stronger signal because that phone is emitting, looking for a service to connect to. I'm not on Wi-Fi at the moment, but there's towers in my neighborhood or antenna sites in my neighborhood. So I just want to note that, I appreciate the ZBA allowing that dialogue, to get where municipality does that. One thing I do want to mention about the EHT case, I'm very much interested in that, there were some findings in that, and one of them was specific to the FCC being required to go back for non-cancer health effects. So non-cancer health effects are not insignificant, but I think that is an important point because one of the early speakers brought up tumors and adenomas. So there's more work that the FCC needs to do, and I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what comes out. That entire case, however, a lot of that was born with the advent of small cells at millimeter-wave 5G frequencies. So that is something that's not proposed here. We are seeing it, or have seen it, in urban areas, and this is a whole new technology. And like I did for the Raymond Avenue memo, there'll be a condition about a process that would need to be followed should this site be approved and constructed, and there's modifications to go to something outside of the frequencies proposed. It was noted correctly, 3500 to 3700, that's 3.5 to 3.7 gigahertz, is being proposed. That's a citizen-band radio. That's not a new set of frequencies and operations that have been out in the public, and it's very clear that Verizon and other carriers could tap into that. In fact, for this site and for small cells that are infill sites, that becomes an important point of the network operations, in that although there's a lower propagation footprint, there is that room, that chunk of bandwidth in that 3500 to 3700 megahertz that does allow call processing and capacity boosts. I, I think, just, just maybe in closing, I think what I've heard tonight a little bit is that the town of Poughkeepsie does not have discreet or prescriptive rules and regulations or code specific to wireless facilities. I had noted that the HRDD 21030 covers a lot about aesthetics, but there's nothing specific in there about wireless facilities. And, you know, as noted by these speakers, and I think acknowledged by everybody on this meeting, we have seen a proliferation, lower power, lower to the ground, and it is a recommendation, I think, to the town to possibly evaluate updating its zoning code with a chapter that will look at emerging technologies and things like that. You know, that being said, I've been in positions before where the carriers have said, "You know, Musso, you can't ask me for that. It's not in the code." And I always kind of bite back a little bit because every project is specific. Every project, you know, has different pushpoints to it, different aspects of it. But in this case, I did ask for a lot of information. I don't want anybody to get the idea that I'm rubber-stamping things. And also with health effects, you know, we did get a supplemental report, I've reviewed the methods behind that. And I'm also familiar with the real-time field readings, so I know that Nicholas had brought up. So I just, maybe that adds some color to some of the comments I would put out tonight. And Chairman, I thank you for giving me the time to put some thoughts out in response. I appreciate it.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have any questions? Then I'm just going to move to adjourn this to the July 11th meeting.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, signify by aye. Are there any opposed? All right, then that motion carries.
You should sit here so your wife and you can be seen. I'll turn it, I need to.
All right, that brings us to item number three. 286 Spackenkill Road, Gasparini. Is there someone here for that application?
Yes.
Yes.
I would confuse myself in this.
Okay, then I think. Okay, all right. Do you want to make a further statement, or that's, that's all? Okay.
Pardon me, Mr. Leahy, this is Alan Rappley, and I'm here with the Gasparinis as well. I'm going to turn the camera so that you can see them. The board, sleep them, they'll be able to hear me.
Tony S., you'll be voting on this one?
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
Do you, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Why don't you describe your application?
Hi. So we had to close our salon due to COVID. We opened it up in our house, in our garage. We were here in February for a meeting to get approval for that, and we now have to get a few variances in order to move forward.
Okay, so once it, you have a pool, do you need a variance for the side yard? And also for the driveway, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So why don't you, how long has the pool been there?
Nine years.
Okay. And the driveway, when did the, well, why don't you go ahead with your, do you want to add to your application?
Asked.
Yeah, guys, why don't you, so the, the, the pool is, a building permit was obtained for the pool nine years ago. It was then constructed. It appears that it's slightly in the side, different setback, so that's one variance. The other is the driveway, in order to allow for turnaround so that folks can get in and out without doing it in the public right-of-way, the driveway was made wider. Essentially, a turnaround was created so that, again, the traffic can come in and out, cars can come in and out without doing that in the public right-of-way. The memo that was given to the board, just one thing I want to correct on that, maybe not correct is the right word, but just point out that the, there's an indication that they're in violation. The Gasparinis have not operated from the moment they were told not to operate, including when it looked as though approval was conferred in February. So I just didn't want the board to think that they were flaunting anything because they haven't. There's a reference to operating illegally, and as soon as they became aware of the problem, they, they shut right down. They rent space at significant cost so that their business can, can survive. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Larry, you're accusing on this one also. So again, Simone, you'll be voting on this. I'm sorry to interrupt. Okay. So when was the driveway widened?
It was widened right before we opened the salon, so last year, a year ago?
Yeah. Just the one, the one additional portion. The other driver, the, the regular driver was put in 16 years ago.
All right, so are you talking about the additional portion that's parallel to Spackenkill Road?
Yes, that's a part, yep, that we just put in last year, yes.
And that helps assisting in turning around to come out so you don't have to back out to Spackenkill?
Exactly. We just thought it would be better if they needed more space to turn around so they could pull out forward.
All right, and when, when I was there on Sunday, there was a car parked in that spot. I think that your earlier testimony was that you keep the, your cars are parked behind, typically parked behind the fence when you're operating, but since you're not operating, it could be anywhere in the parking lot, right?
That's correct, because it was closed on Sunday.
In the driveway, okay. All right, so I thought that there was a little site problem pulling out of there with a car parked in that spot? So if this were, I think that that might be a condition that that can be used as a parking spot, but.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. Christine?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that, because it's been a while, I think, since we were inside, but in the garage, the garage is where the business is.
The fire whistle in the notebook is going off right now. We can't, we can't hear it in just one second.
Just one second.
That's calling the fire department to, to business.
It's a real problem. I could meet them for them.
No, you, it won't, closing the windows will not, believe me, I think. I don't know anyone sleeps near the fire department, but in any event, okay, it seems that it's assisted. Thank you.
Okay. So you can hear me?
Yes.
So, so the business is operated within the garage that was converted, and I just wanted to verify that you can access your house from, from that, that space. There's a hallway or something, right, that goes right into your house? Is that correct?
Yeah, how it, how it lays out is the, there is a deck that's constructed, that's actually constructed to the house and to the garage. So what happens is when the Gasparinis leave their house, they step on a deck, they walk down a few steps, I haven't counted them. Above them is the deck. They open the door, and they're in the salon. I don't know if you can visualize that, but it, 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 it's all connected via, via the decking and the steps.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Simone?
No questions.
Alice?
And so I just want to ask about the pool. How is it that the pool wound up where it was? Is it connected to the property, the way the property looks?
A pool?
Yeah, she wants to know how it got there. I mean, you got a permit.
We have no idea. We hired Orange County pools, they came out, they got the permits, they did all the work, and, you know.
Until the site plan, did you know it was in the setback?
No, no. We had no idea. We didn't, you know, we just went to the, went to the power channels, and, and that was it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. No further questions?
Thank you.
Tony?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Tony S.?
No questions.
All right. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? There is a letter that you referenced that will be made part of the, for the record. So let me just add a couple of questions about that. I think there were some pictures that were submitted that... I think there were some pictures that were submitted that seemed to show some flooding. That was with this application, right?
Yes.
Okay. Are you aware of a flooding problem in the side and backyard?
No, no.
Did they email you?
I thought, I got, yeah. You had those sent?
I don't know. They, they were, there were pictures emailed to us.
Right. Do you acknowledge, is that any part of your property in the wetlands?
No.
Okay, and refresh my recollection again, the wide driveway, the driveway that goes to, towards the back of your house, how long has it been that wide?
Seventeen years.
Seventeen years, yes.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
Did you put that driveway in?
Did you hear that?
Oh, sorry. Did you put, did you install the driveway, or did you do the driveway yourselves?
When the driveway was?
The previous owner, or did you do it?
Can you hear us?
Again, anyone on the Zoom here from the planning board, a zoning board?
Mr. Rapier, can you hear us? I guess that answers that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure this is happening, those, we can't hear anybody.
We can't hear anything.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. No, I can't hear them either.
Okay.
Did this happen? It happened last time, too. It did.
I'm going to just screen that chat box and tell them.
You went out and back in, and it worked. You rebooted.
I rebooted.
Yeah, stand, please stand by.
Want to reboot?
No, go ahead.
Yeah? I'm going to make.
Maybe we have an hour and a half, minute, and then you have to.
No, we don't. I'm sorry. I get grumpy when technical things like this happen.
Yeah, they come. Yeah, I think it's on there and, boy, they just keep working in there.
So do you hear us now? No, okay, hold on.
There you go.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Thanks.
All right, so.
Did you have to log back in or were you able to stay logged in?
We didn't have to log back in, no.
Interesting, because we lost the other people who were on the phone.
No, we're getting them back now here because I just reclaimed host and.
Yeah, we see everybody.
Yep, hold on, now we got everybody. All right.
All right, sorry for the technical problems.
No problem.
All right, Diane, you have a question?
Yeah, I asked whether you put the driveway in, in the present state that it's in, or was it there when you purchased the property?
We put the driveway in. There was no driveway, it was pretty much dirt and broken rubble. You know, the house was a renovate, you know, a fixer-upper, so it was like half broken-up driveway and half dirt.
No more questions.
Okay, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? There's no one in the audience? I don't see anyone on Zoom.
If you're on Zoom, you can unmute yourself or raise your hand or.
All right, I'm not seeing anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. That brings us to item number four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you can, you can wait till the end of the meeting or fight out tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. This is 16 Vassarview Road. Hi, let's state your name.
Hi, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay, what do you want to do?
Well, we want to put on an addition on the back of our house so we can add a full bath and a downstairs bedroom for our advancing years.
So you want to be, you're going to be 16 feet from the side lot where 20 feet is required, so you need a variance of four feet. But tell me, is this getting any closer to the side lot than line than the existing house?
No.
All right, so it's just coming back farther a little bit?
Footstep, stepped in.
Okay, all right. That's all I have, Christine?
No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
No questions. No questions.
No questions.
Yeah, no questions.
All right. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? All right, I don't see anyone in the pub, in the audience, and I don't see anyone on All right, in that case then, I'll move to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. You can wait, you can wait or fight out tomorrow. That brings us to item number five, 22 Fairmont Avenue. Is there anyone here?
Amy Bonhurri, with thanks to Ms. Adam, representing the applicant, Stacy Lamar.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay, why don't you describe the application?
So it's an existing building that's currently a, it was most recently a podiatrist's office. Stacy's going to change the use to an adult, social adult daycare facility? Day service.
Is there a second microphone for you? Well.
Yes, yeah.
Social adult day service.
So we received planning board approval for the change of use. The sign requires two variances, one because the existing building is not setback 20 feet from the front yard setback, and the other for the proposed location of the sign, which is this, the location where the sign is now, with, that had had a variance under a different zoning district. So the zoning district has since changed. So she needs a variance for the sign for two reasons.
Okay, so tell me a little bit about the sign. The existing sign has two directions, has two parts to it.
Correct, it's at the corner of Fairmont and, yeah.
And Davis. Do you intend on replicating that both of them? So there's two signs or is it just one sign along Davis or Fairview?
The same configuration is what would be the intent to replicate.
So it's.
Yeah, it's going to be.
Okay, so what's the total square footage of the sign with both sides?
It would be 20.
So in your application, there's a picture.
Right.
But it has just one panel?
It's got both sides. Oh, I see what you're saying. So it would be double, it would be what the picture is on each direction.
Okay, all right. And how high?
It would, four feet off the ground.
And tell me this, do you have any plans for those hedges there?
I hope so. I'm planning on leveling them down a little bit, quite a bit, and trying to get rid of, try to clean it up. We got to clean the whole place up. There's a lot of work that we're going to do, including renovations inside. What do you want done?
Okay, so tell me, I mean, do you plan on getting rid of the hedges?
I don't plan on getting rid of the hedges because I think it's a good privacy barrier for my seniors. I just don't need them to be up to the roof.
Okay.
You know, they have to be trimmed and neat, and that sign has to be able to be exposed to the traffic on both directions. So, yeah, that's part of the work in progress.
Okay, and Chrissy, is there a section of the code that deals with corners and the heights of hedges? I thought I remember something.
Well, yeah, technically, it would be, the hedge is considered a wall, so it's not supposed to be higher than.
Three and a half feet? Okay, all right. And the building, you don't intend on moving that at all?
I didn't hear you.
Moving it? No. Move it to the building? We're not going to stay there, yes.
And spend there a while.
Yeah.
Christine?
No questions.
All right.
No questions.
I just wonder if it actually requires two variances because it's kind of like two signs on two street, you know, on two different streets.
I don't think I was sure that it was two signs. I thought it was just one. It's connected, though. It's front and back of the same thing on one sign.
So is it a flat sign with two faces or is it like a V-shaped sign?
No, it's not V-shaped, a flat sign, it should be a flat sign. Elizabeth Boutique has the same, down, on the next block over, she's got the similar signs, what I'm proposing. And she's right on the next block over, on a corner lot with her sign next to the sidewalk. And it's a front and back sign.
Right, so there's a, they're connected. One is on Davis and one's on Fairmont. So it's one sign, but there are two faces.
As opposed to a standard sign which has a face on this side and a face on this side?
Right, except for, it wouldn't, probably wouldn't have one on the back because that would go into the parking lot.
I think there is a code provision about that, so if you all carry on for a second, I will try and locate it.
You want to replicate the sign that's there?
Pretty much want to replicate the sign that's there because it was sufficient for the podiatry practice for all these years.
The sign that's there is, is at 90-degree angles, has two faces at 90 degrees.
It's so hard to see in the bushes.
Oh, yeah.
And what do you plan on opening?
You guys got to give me the approval so that I can like get a little bit on the construction. We closed now, a few seconds, so.
Okay.
It's now a property.
For the record, yeah. For the record, when we applied, she was not the owner, but now she is. She's since closed during that.
Well, that makes it easier.
So God willing, if I could find laborers and everything else in September, I'm hoping a three-month turnaround.
Okay.
If the universe is on my side on this one.
So one of the things I'll note is that the requested variances are for the distance of the sign and the setback as opposed to the size of the sign. But that's as far as I got at this point. So I think you can consider, you know, continue with if there are any discussions or concerns about the location of the sign, and then give me one second on the other part of the signs.
While we're discussing this, anyone from the community or from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Okay, I don't hear anything.
No one in the audience, no one on Zoom, I don't think.
Okay, so the code provision that applies is, just for the record, the number 210123H5, which says for signs with two faces or sides, you only count one side, provided that they're either back-to-back or 30 degrees. If you have, if you exceed 30 degrees, then you count each side. But I think this applicant is still okay because this appears, they're allowed 12 feet in this district, and this actual sign is one foot by three feet, four inches, so even if you double that, they're still good.
But because it has to be 10 feet from the property line, there are two, are there two property lines that you need a variance for or just?
I would, yes, if it's a corner lot, I would do from both property lines. I mean, I don't know where you are in terms of the one.
They're both on the, it's right on the corner, so it's.
Literally, so, yeah. And I would do it from the front and side. Don't need an area variance, but need for, right from both sides, and then also the setback.
Do we need to re-advertise it or?
No. I mean, I think the indication, you know, I don't think if any, because the sign's existing, that they're seeking to replace. If anyone had any concerns, I think.
The indication was that this was rezoned, so.
Right.
Even though it was approved before.
Exactly, it was a different zoning district. So because it's been, the zoning district has changed, that's one of the reasons they're here, are new variants.
Okay, all right. Did anyone else have any other questions now?
Thank you, Christine.
Then I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. You can wait till the end of the evening or fight out tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good luck. That brings us to item number six, 7 Brady Place. Is there someone here for that application?
Yes, good evening. My name is Rich Tompkins from Marie Architects.
Hi, Mr. Tompkins, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, why don't you describe this application?
Okay, I'll just share my screen here with the drawing. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so this is an existing single-family residence, and there is an existing front porch that has been extended. There, on the rear of the house, was an existing set of stairs from a rear entrance or exit, and there was a eight-foot by eight-foot deck and a new set of stairs constructed. And there was also a one-story, roughly 71-square-foot addition that was added to the rear. From my understanding, this residence was involved in some sort of explosion or fire Okay. So this is an existing single-family residence, and there is an existing front porch that has been extended. There, on the rear of the house, was an existing set of stairs from a rear entrance or exit, and there was a eight-foot by eight-foot deck and a new set of stairs constructed. And there was also a one-story, roughly 71-square-foot addition that was added to the rear. From my understanding, this residence was involved in some sort of explosion or fire, and the rear wall was destroyed, and a portion of the rear roof was destroyed. So my client has purchased the house, and he made some of these modifications, not realizing all of the implications that these modifications make to zoning and building requirements. So we're here asking for some side yard, rear yard variances. As you can see here, part of the issue is that the, obviously, the setback requirements must have changed since the building was constructed. So you can see by this dotted line, that is the current buildable area based on the current zoning. So you can see that the majority of the existing residence does not meet the current zoning. So the addition is in line with the existing side of the house on the left. It does project into the rear yard slightly, but not into the required setback. So we do have 31 feet, where the required is 30. The new deck does encroach within the setback requirements of the rear and the side. And again, the front porch also encroaches on the side yard along with the existing front porch. So I do have a couple of pictures here. You can see that the front porch wasn't expanded to the right. It is a covered porch. And then from the rear, it's a little tough to tell, but you can see the new eight-by-eight deck. And then further back in the photograph, you can see that there was a small addition that was constructed.
And what brought it to the homeowner's attention, the need for the variances?
I believe the building department notified them to, I think they, I believe there was a stop work order issued for building purposes and zoning issues.
Alright, so it's fair to say that the additions don't encroach any more into the side lots than the existing structure? Is that fair to say?
Correct, yeah. You can see here in the, at the front line of the house, it's four foot eight plus or minus, and in the rear, it is four foot eight plus or minus. So it is in line with that side yard, or that side of the residence.
That's all I have. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Simone?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
No, no questions.
No questions.
No questions.
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Alright, who stops sharing their screen for a moment? Thank you. I don't see anyone, anyone in the Zoom world who wishes to comment on this application? Alright, I don't see anything. So I'll move to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to item number seven, 6 Mountain Road. Is there someone here from that application?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you state your names?
Christine Havardik, Alexandria, Alabama.
Do you both swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, yes.
Alright, why don't you describe your application?
We are applying for a variance for an above-ground pool. I think we only have 10 feet, and we need more.
Okay, and why are you putting it there?
Frankly, it's in the backyard, so I would think that's where above-ground pool would go. The only reason why we're putting it there, I don't know if you have the schematic in front of you, regardless of where we would put it in the yard, it would require a variance whether we move it to the left or the right. The backyard is frankly not big enough to be completely compliant with code.
Okay, and your backyard kind of slopes also, right?
Yes, correct. It slopes, it slopes from, so if you're facing the backyard, it slopes from right to left, and the area in the middle is the only area that's level. And that's right off the back, the deck, the deck, yeah.
And the backyard's surrounded by a fence, right?
Correct, it's a six-foot fence.
And there's, there's nothing really close to the fence on the other side of your property, is there?
It's just the neighbor's backyard, yeah.
And the side is not a problem? Okay. And you're on town, Water and Sewer?
Yes.
Alright, those are the questions I have. Christine?
I don't need questions.
Art?
No questions.
Simone?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony?
No, sir.
Larry?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Alright, I don't see anyone in the audience, and I don't see anyone on Zoom. Alright, I'm not seeing anything. I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. So again, you can wait until the rest, till the end of the evening, or find out tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck. That brings us to number eight, 4 Vanik Road. Is someone here? Okay.
Hi, I'm Dave Freeman. I'm the architect for the project.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do. I know some of you were out at the house this past week, with the rest of you liked pictures of the property.
Alright, so what do you want to do?
So this is actually the, my second project for Pam. The first one, we had an addition to the right of the house. This one, we literally want to take the garage that's there, the carport, pick it up, and put a proper garage there. She'll have a proper garage, storage above, that's accessed by a stairway, and you should see that in the plans. And then a proper utility room. The one that's there is a little funky, I think is the right word. There are some issues with the foundations, so as you look at the garage that's there now, the carport that's there now, about the first 10, 15 feet of the foundation is a concrete foundation. The rest of it is a dry-laid stone. So that is going to get a new foundation, but we are replacing exactly the same size, just with new, enclosed, fire-separated, no change in the size of the setback that's there now.
And there's one letter from a neighbor in support, and I think there's another labor, another letter against. I thought I saw another letter. And I have not seen. And tell me this, is the new garage, how much closer to the property line will it be?
None. Okay, so we're actually, we're maintaining the same, the same building wall that's there, the same foundation wall we're just going to rebuild on, except for the last six feet or so. And there's no other change in placement. There's no decrease in the side yard that's there, just a real garage.
Alright, but there are some water problems there, right, on the property?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, we, when we were out there, there was some drainage stuff that you did?
Yes, there are curtain drains.
Curtain, okay. So are you planning on gutters or some, something to do, some method to deal with rainwater?
So there'll be gutters on the front and the back of the roof.
Okay.
Simply drain them off, not into the neighbor's property ideally, of course, but get them away from the house. It is slab-on-grade, so we're not going to create a water issue for the house, essentially.
Okay. Alright, that's all I had. Christine?
That's it, no questions.
Art?
I had a little confusion. When we were out there, we talked to the, I thought it was, when we were out there, we spoke to the owner, I thought we, we were told that the outer wall is going to go about two feet closer to the other property. That's not the case. So it's going to stop right where it is now.
Stop it where it is now.
Different peak with gutters to keep water under the property.
Alright. So it just, like I said, the back foundation's a stone foundation. We have to literally pull that up. There's what I would call a farm slab in the garage right now, so we'll be getting a new slab on top of it, but the size does not change.
Thank you.
No questions.
I have no questions.
No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
And no questions.
Alright, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Come on up. Why don't you, do you want to give them a spot to sit down? Okay, why don't you state your name?
How you doing? My name is Michael Vandenberg. I'm 6 Vanik Road. I'll be at a house in which they'll be encroaching upon my property line.
Mr. Vandenberg, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Alright, I said they've contracted several door retailers, and the only way to support the garage door, that would be the garage door they chose, would be to increase both in width and height of the garage door. That means they'll be encroaching further onto my property. Now, my leach field is in my front yard. Now, I really don't need more of their water onto my property. And if they're going to encroach further onto my property, so then they're requesting a 10-foot variance. Now, we sent photographs in, and you can see a stake next to their garage, I mean, next to their shed, and I have their drawing in my hand, saying that that shed is five feet away from that stick. But that doesn't look five feet. That looks three inches. I'm not asking them to move the shed. I'm not asking them to move the driveway, which is three inches away from my property line. But I am asking them, you know, give me a break. Eventually, you're going to be on my property. You want to keep on getting closer and closer and closer? You want me to move into the stream? You want me to get no canal would float away? We can always do that. But I think push come to shove, you wouldn't have these variances if they didn't mean something. And I have a hearing in my hand, in her writing, to increase both in width and in height. I told her a number of times, she wants a garage door so nobody sees her stuff. Alright, I told her, get a barn, get a carpenter and get a barn door type entrance. No one can see through that, but she wants a particular type of garage door. And that's going to inconvenience me. It just gets closer and closer to my house. So far, to keep her happy, I've cut down three trees, and the drainage water that was on her property runs on a rail down the side of my property that I have to keep on cleaning. Sooner or later, the wishing tree has run out of leaves.
Say that again, I couldn't understand.
You got a wishing tree. You got a little boy keeps on wishing until there are no more leaves. You know, she's keep on asking me for more and more and more and more. And sooner or later, I'd like to draw the line, or is a variance just arbitrary? I don't want to be a pain in the keister about this, but right here, height and width, closer to my property line.
Okay.
That's it?
My, I'm just going to confirm what you're saying. I think that maybe there's a miscommunication. So the variance is because, right now, the property is too close to the property line, the building's too close to the property line. You're going to replace that. Right. In the same spot. Yes. So it's still too close to the property line. Right. Okay, but it's, so it needs a variance.
It, it will need a variance if we do any work on it.
Right.
Right? It can exist as it exists.
Right.
It exists before zoning. We are changing the roof direction, if you've noticed. So right now, the shed roof does dump all of its water towards the neighbor's property. In the new roof, the roof will be gabled front and back, so half the water will go to the back of the property that can be directed towards hers. The front half will still go to the front, so actually reducing the amount of water that's directed in that area. Nine-foot by seven-foot garage door, it fits.
Okay. So do you understand now?
Yeah, but I'd like him to read this piece, if he may.
It says that, yes.
Alright.
But that doesn't mean that the building footprint is wider.
Well, I don't understand wider. I've been getting wider since I was 16. My pants keep getting bigger. I'm getting closer.
Well, I can't give you a variance for that.
No, I'm not asking for more. But I know, I know what bigger is. I know what wider is.
Okay. Alright then. Yep, but you weren't sworn, so why don't you just agree to swear, tell the truth.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge? I do. I would just like to say that I misunderstood what the size was, so when I was filling out those applications, I didn't know. That's why I brought the architect with me. And the trees that are in reference, that my neighbor was asked to take down, were hanging over my rooftop. That's how big they were. I asked him to trim the trees, and he refused. He came over to look at it, and he said, oh, yes, I do see. My trees are hanging over your house. If there was a storm, they would fall on my house. I think that is very unfair that he is bringing that up now.
That really depends on what, what direction the wind blows. My mother lives in North Carolina. She got the trees from the neighbors. If they blow this way, it's my mother's house. It blows that way, it hits their house. I took the trees down, and there were two trees. The third tree was at the end of the driveway.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Any, any other questions? Then I'll move to, okay, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
I think, I'm not sure if the people in the upper-left corner are trying to say something.
Is there someone, someone else who wants to speak on this application? Okay, so unmute yourself.
Okay, yes.
What's your name?
Joe Corrigan.
Joe, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. I do.
Okay, what do you want to say?
We live across, there's only four houses on this road. We live across from the property in question, and diagonally to the gentleman, Mike, who just spoke. So I'm very familiar with the, the whole thing. We have lived here since 1975. I need to share with just a couple of things that I heard. Number one, I'm fully supportive of, of being able for her to do this. She has made various additions to her home. She's been there almost 10 years. I had to ask her, by the way, how many years have you been across the street? Mike and Shirley down in the corner have been there more than that. But a couple of things that I just heard, a few years back, Pam ended up bringing in construction people to fix the drainage problem, and has been there since we moved in on her side yard. Her side yard on the opposite side of the, excuse me, of the other property toward Vassar Road, there was always standing water there every spring. Those of you familiar with, there were two people that went there. If you look toward Vassar Road, you go up the hill, up, up the hill, there's always been a water problem coming all the way down. Pam ended up spending a great deal of money and finally cured the problem, the drainage problem that would go through her property and, and then toward my property. She finally cured a few years ago at great expense. And if you go to the property, you can see a drain by Vanik Road, and two drains in the back of her property where the water is channeled to bypass Mike's property. So I think that she has gone above and beyond trying to correct the drainage problem. Number two, the two, the two board members that were there, which I don't know who you are, they took a, a look at the property. took a look at the property. There's about 50 or 60 feet between her house and Mike's house. So I'm just, maybe somebody could sign a statement and say, do you intend to go any further? And that might solve the problem. All I want to do is fix the garage, and I promise not to go any further toward the creek side. I don't know what the solution is, but I think everything that she has done, she's done with excellent contractors, she's done with an excellent architect. And I think that this would enhance the property for the town of Poughkeepsie. And I do really not feel that it would be a great burden on Mike's property next door.
Okay. Mike, what's the comment on that?
Yeah, first of all, they're fast friends. They hang out all the time. The wives do. All right? So that's all very, very one-sided. Now, she did drain, but it's going down the side of my property. All right? And now I got to clean that out all the time. But that's okay. I don't have a problem with that. Two, they're four houses. What kind of neighborhood is it going to do? One guy got a one-car garage. I got no garage. Joe's got no garage. It's not going to make that big of a deal.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may respond to that, the water was going down the same way anyway. And now, all of a sudden, the water is, any water going down there is lessened because of the work that had been done on the property.
Okay. Okay. In that case, I again move to close of public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to item number nine. Seventy Woodwane Avenue. Okay, would you state your names?
Mine's Michael Johnson.
Mr. Johnson, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what do you want to do?
Basically, we applied for, my wife and I applied for a variance on an extending deck, 12 by 10, and want to add an extension of seven feet. In addition to that, we're going to be adding the stairs from the extended section of that deck.
Okay. And you provided a diagram?
Yes, sir.
And this diagram accurately reflects what you wanted to do?
Yes, it does. It does.
So just so I'm clear about this, there are two variances for this, two side lot variances. Is that because the existing deck was built without a variance? Or is it just because there's an addition to the deck that it makes?
I believe it's just the addition. I would have to double check on that, though.
Okay.
I believe it's just the addition.
So the addition's only going on one side?
Yes. Seven feet, right?
Right, but you have, this is, you need a 18 feet, four inches from one side and six inches from the other side. So is it because the existing deck is not, wasn't approved? Or is it just because there's an addition to the deck that makes both sides?
I believe it's just the extension. I would have to double check on that.
I believe the...
I believe it's just the extension.
Okay. So do you think it's just one?
So I think technically, because it's attached to the house, it's making it bigger. So it would be a variance from the other side as well, but the deck is only on one side.
Right. Okay. All right, then I don't have any other questions. Christine?
No questions.
All right. Simone?
No questions.
Phil?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Stan?
No questions.
Tom?
No questions.
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience, and I don't see anyone on Zoom. Then I'll move to close the public hearing. All those in favor, signify by aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to item number 10. Twenty, Earlwood Drive. Thanks very much. You can wait to the end, or you can find out tomorrow.
Thank you.
Is there someone here for that? Okay, why don't you unmute yourself? Larry, okay.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. What's your name, mister?
My name is Evan Kelsey.
Hi, Evan, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I can.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
So I'm applying for a variance for a fence around pool equipment on a pool that was in the existing property that we bought in 2018 but was not in working use. Unfortunately, the previous owners are, when the pool was originally built, the pool equipment was actually housed strangely inside the house. So the pool equipment here, maybe this is a little too small, but the pool equipment actually was housed in kind of this corner of the house over here. This is the in-ground pool here. The variance was approved, you know, many, many decades ago. And so to get the pool in working order, we had to, you know, install new pool equipment. And the only logical place that we found to install it was actually on this south side of the property. There's a fence that goes around the pool here. This is the road here. And it is 31 feet from the center of the road, 17 feet from the edge of the road. The fence would be around the pool equipment, a 6 by 9 fence. And unfortunately, the property that we have, it's actually the lowest elevation of this side of the neighborhood. So the pool itself is actually a higher elevation than the yard around it. And so there was an in-ground pool. We would have, if we wanted to put the pool equipment on the north side of the property or the west side of the property, we would actually had to have built a pretty, you know, cost prohibitive structure to elevate the pool equipment above the pool itself. And on the east side of the property, that is actually where we keep our garbage cans to keep it out of the view of pedestrians and motorists. And that's kind of the right of way for the garbage cans. The fence itself does not impede any views from motorists or pedestrians. And perhaps, you know, this would be helpful here if I kind of just show you a couple of things. But that's the variance that we're asking for, is a fence to put around this pool equipment here so that it can be housed, you know, on the south side of the pool.
Do you know how far your property goes or how close it gets to the road?
My property gets, I mean, the property line itself is fairly close to the road here. You can see the line, the property line coming down here. And the road itself, you know, starts here. So the, I think the, the property line itself is, you know, fairly close to the road.
Okay. And how did it come that you wound up figuring out that you needed a variance?
So this was, this was our fault. We didn't understand that equipment and the fence around the equipment would need a variance. So we had actually started work on, you know, re-renovating the pool before getting that variance. So we, I greatly apologize for that. And so we stopped work immediately after getting that letter.
All right. And the fence that's there, though, there's a variance for that or permit for that?
That's right, yeah. It was, I think in the late 70s or early 80s, there was a variance for that fence. And then when we redid the fence, when we moved in, I think the fence was redone in 2019, we, you know, got, I think our contractor got just approval for that. That would be this white fence here.
Okay. Christine?
So would you just explain to me, you want to pull that whole fence to box, to box, do you want to just box in that, the equipment? Are you looking to move that part of the fence completely?
Yeah, we're not looking to move the entire fence. We're looking to box in the equipment so that it's, you know, you still have the white fence aesthetic, but it's boxed in for the pool equipment itself.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
All right.
If you want to box it as, does that mean then you would bump that inner panel out behind the pool equipment and just make it square? Or are you going to just have a box on the outside of the existing fence? You know what I'm saying? If you took that existing piece out, that's in front of the, between the pool and the pumps right now, right? And you took that and you ran that out and boxed it in, so you had access from inside to the pool to the pumps? Or you want access only from the roadside?
We were, we were advised to have it on the outside of the fence by a local pool company for, you know, for, I guess, a variety of reasons. First and foremost, I guess, was the noise that pool equipment has. You know, it's not a big noise, but it's enough to where most pool owners don't want their pool equipment right next to the pool, where they want some sort of a barrier or kind of, you know, soundproof thing or something to shield the sound from the pool, from the pool, between pool and the pool equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Another question. So you'll have to have some kind of a gate in order to access that equipment? Is that correct?
That's right. And, yeah, we have that today on the fence as it stands today, where on the east side of the pool, there is a gate where you're just opening up part of the fence. And we were planning on just having essentially the same thing as it's, you know, boxed around the pool equipment to be able to access the pool equipment.
Okay, and there's no roof?
There would be no roof. That's right.
Thank you.
Yep, pool equipment is made to, I guess, handle any sort of weather outdoors.
Thank you. No further questions.
Is there enough room for fencing and some landscaping to camouflage the, I mean, you have a lot of landscaping along part of the fence there, which kind of lessens the impact of that white fence. Is there enough room there in front of you?
There certainly is.
Okay.
There certainly is, yeah. After buying the property in 2018, we've done a significant, call it, probably putting it kindly, renovation to the house and the property itself. So we do care about the aesthetics of this part of the road here, absolutely.
Okay. Tony?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Stan?
No questions.
Tom?
Yeah, just something I wanted to ask you about. I mean, I've never seen anything like this before, to be honest with you. But I was looking at your photograph number seven, and was there any particular reason why that equipment couldn't have been located, let's say, alongside that existing fence, between that fence and your driveway?
So that would be, that would be, I know the, you know, I know the photo you're looking at. So that side of the pool, there, it kind of impedes the right of way from, essentially the back side of the house to the road. That's, you know, that's probably the main reason why we chose, or kind of were advised to put it on the south side of the pool. And we're, I guess, we're still running into the issue of, like, it's still visible from the road if it's on the east side of the pool or the south side of the pool.
Okay, and just one more. If you were to leave this equipment the way you have it, which is what you prefer to do, how's the access going to be for whoever maintains this? Where would they access it from? Coming off of your driveway? Is there going to be a walkway of some kind or climb the hill or what?
Yeah, I guess the plan would be that the person would act, like myself, I would access it from my yard. Or I would come down, you know, walk down the street here and then take a right and access it from the road just by foot.
Okay, that's all I've got.
Okay, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this? Come on up.
Rachel Carrera.
Rachel, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. So I live on the house directly in front of this. And so I'm a little concerned, a little confused, because I thought that according to the town code 210107A, that there is to be no pool equipment on the front yard. So he's applying for a fence to cover the pool equipment that isn't allowed by the town.
So first of all, his whole pool is in the front yard because of the way the roadway?
I understand, it's a corner unit.
Okay. And this is the Zoning Board of Appeals? So when a property owner is impacted by a zoning code, they can come and ask for a variance to vary from the zoning code, so which is?
No, I understand that part. But I'm like, my question is, is he requesting a variance for pool equipment first?
Yes.
And then the fence around it, if you approve the, that's, I'm just saying that there are two variances here. Okay. So I live directly across the street from them, so I'm 31 Earlwood Drive. I have an in-ground pool that was built in 1972. So four years ago, I redid the entire pool, the decking, and my equipment was also in the basement of my house. So I moved it outside, does that make sense, instead of having it in the basement just in case it flooded? But I have it next to the house in the backyard where pool equipment belongs. It doesn't belong on the front yard next to the street. Obviously, why we have this in place? So I just, from anywhere, now, I take great pride in my house and in the landscaping, in the pool, everything. I keep our house beautiful. And so you, to me, it's the biggest eyesore. So I understand he wants to cover it with a fence. It's going to be a bigger eyesore because it's going to now come out, it's literally like on the road. So when there's no, when there's no trees or anything like that, the minute you turn on Earlwood, you see it. It's just, to me, it absolutely, there has to be, because I did it, so I know, I know it's expensive, but there is another place. Usually, things like, if it's in the basement, it's closer to the home. You move the equipment outside, but you make it closer to the home, so you don't have all this piping, you don't have all this electricity. They chose not to do that. I believe it's because they didn't want to see the equipment, and he mentioned the noise, they don't want to hear it. But neither should anybody on the block. Because you don't want to hear it, why should the rest of the neighborhood? It's an older neighborhood. Every house is kept nice and neat. There are... There are several other pools in our neighborhood, and none of them had to put the pool equipment in the front yard. So I just, I just have a picture of, just to show you guys. And I know you have this, but I only have one. But this is from anywhere in my, on my property, anywhere from the windows of our house. We look out and we see pool equipment in the front yard. So I just, I implore you that there are other solutions. Perhaps they didn't, they didn't research or they didn't like it because it's too close to the house and it makes too much noise. I understand, I have a pool, it's right next to our backyard, I know, you hear it, but you have a pool.
Let me ask you this. The property, your pool equipment is at the same level as your pool?
You can see, so this is the part of my front of the house. Our pool equipment is back here. You can't even see our pool and there's landscaping across the thing. So is it, yeah, it's on the land. I mean, we had to put a cement, you know, a five-foot cement slab. So I do, there are other ways that you can do it. I mean, I, like I said, I take such great pride in our house. So it's just me and my son. And when we did it, that was one thing, when we had to move the pool equipment outside, I was like, okay, but it's going to look horrible. So we landscaped all around it. So you, so our neighbor, the one neighbor that it's, that's on that side, he doesn't, you don't see anything. You don't see anything from the road, you see landscaping. So I just really believe there was other options. They just didn't take them. And I'm sorry that they didn't. And I definitely, I called as soon as, I saw they were doing something, I thought there were perhaps landscaping. And I called the town immediately because I'm like, how could you have pool equipment there? Once I saw that it was pool equipment by the end of the week, I'm like, you, there's no way. So I did, I called the town, there was other people I know who had come to my house who live in Poughkeepsie and were like, that's not, that's not the code. So I think several other people called as well. So I just, I just asked you to consider that. There are other options than the front lawn next to the street. And I do understand to your point of saying the landscaping and stuff, but it's just, it's an eyesore. It doesn't, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Earlwood, but it's a nice, quiet, older, older neighborhood. Why I chose to live there, why I chose to buy the house when I got my son. So that's it. I just, I just implore you to deny their variance. And they should have checked with the town. When I, when I got my pool done, our people we used checked. You know, that's kind of, when you do that, it's our obligation, I think, in the neighborhood for the other neighbors to say, to do stuff according to code. I understand it's not always possible, but I don't think that that is the case in here. It could be somewhere behind the fence, not for the entire neighborhood to see.
Okay. Anybody want to ask any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
To the... Okay, I'm just having her over there. To the homeowner, the gentleman?
Yes.
Variance. Why, would you be able to put it where the garbage, would you be able to put it where the garbage cans are now to get it off that corner and then just relocate the garbage cans? That would resolve the issue rather quickly, keep the noise outside your fence at the same time?
So the short answer is that would, there's actually not quite enough room to be able to put the pool equipment there and then actually fence it in and have enough space for any sort of right-of-way for anybody who wants to get from that side of the house to the driveway or the front of the house. Especially in the, you know, the weather that we have, where we have a lot of snow in this area. It would impede the ability to be able to do that.
But if it was on that side, you wouldn't have to fence it in, I don't believe, because it wouldn't be along the roadway?
It would still, it would still be visible from the road and it would still be less than, less than the amount required to, like, we would still require a variance for it.
Mr. Chairman, is that?
It would still be in the front yard, so it would still need a variance.
Would it be at a side?
Certainly have less of an impact.
And so, I mean, obviously, I'm, I'm look at it every day now. But I just, to the aesthetics of the whole block, I mean, it's just, it's a pretty block. The lawns are kept nice and...
And we talked about the word to landscape that piece of property beautifully. I will say that the person who's speaking, we can, we can see her pool equipment from our house. We see it every day. You can see it from the road and we can hear it as well.
All right, any other questions?
Is your pool equipment in the front yard?
No. No, why would I put front, why would I put pool equipment in the front yard? Right, I follow the code, I followed the code of the town.
It's on the side of the house. And hers is on the...
It meets the code of the town.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just, because he's just...
That's all right.
I'm sorry, it's just...
We're going to listen to everybody, but it's not going to turn into a...
No, no, I agree. So mine is to code. It's where it's allowed to be in the house, in the property. It's not in the front yard and it's not on the street either. So I, that's, I just, I do think it impacts our neighborhood, the aesthetics of our neighborhood. So I just ask that you deny their variance.
Okay. All right, anyone else who wants to comment on this application? Okay. I don't see anyone from Zoom. Doesn't seem like it. I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number 11, 736 Dutchess Turnpike. Is someone here for that application?
I'm Christina Romero.
Christina? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
I'm John Sullivan.
John, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
All right, what do you want to do?
Good evening. My name is John Sullivan, I'm consulting with the applicants. This is Tina Romero, her husband's in the audience, Gabe. So we're proposing, this is a single-family residence, it's basically a Cape-style home. There is on the site plan that was submitted, there's a mudroom on the east side of the house. And the plan is to basically square off the corners. The shaded area on the site plan represents the new addition that would square the corner on the east side. The part that's between the two is the existing mudroom. So the expansion will include more space for the kitchen on the first floor as well as a larger laundry and mudroom. Those two locations currently also, there are, is an exterior deck that is there now, but the plan is to square that off. So there's a 20-foot side yard requirement. That existing mudroom is 14-foot three, so it turns out to be a six-foot nine, sorry, five-foot-nine variance.
Is it fair to say it doesn't go any farther than the existing?
Yes, we will not go any further than what exists.
Okay, and there's a retaining wall that's passed even closer to the sideline, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that actually sticks out a little further, but that will be gone. So it'll actually be just to the, to the side of the house.
Okay. And the driveway is on that side or the other side?
Both sides.
Both sides, okay. Okay, I don't have any questions. Christine?
No questions.
All right.
No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
No, no questions. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience. Anyone from Zoom?
Not appear to be.
All right, I don't see anything, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to item... Item 12, 53 Violet Avenue. Is there someone here for that? Come on in.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Gerald Difino.
Mr. Difino, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
Okay, I want to refurbish my garage as well as extend it eight feet. And so just so I can have more room in there to put my lawn equipment. And I don't want to build a shed just for all that stuff there. I just want to, you know, put it in the garage along with the car and stuff like that.
Okay, and do you own the house across, adjacent?
Yes.
Okay, and is it going to be similar to the garage that's there on that property?
What was it?
Will it be similar to the garage that's on that property?
Yeah.
Okay. Will it be in the same footprint? The same, same spot, the new garage will be?
Oh, yes, yes.
Are you going to tear down the old garage?
No.
All right, you're just going to extend it?
I'm going to extend it and refurbish the old garage as far as, you know, there's some rotted two-by-twos in the inside, going to replace that and stuff like that. Put a new roof on, a new garage door, because the garage doors that I have now, they pull out and in the wintertime, it's very hard to open up because the ground heaves. So it'd be nice to have a new garage door where it goes up instead of going out. And then putting a window in there for light and a double door on the side, which would be the east side facing the house.
Okay. All right, and is that a rental or do you, is that, the house, is that a rental?
Yes, yes.
But the garage would be for you?
Yes, I use the garage. And we have our lawn equipment in there right now and stuff like that. And it's packed and I got to clean it out, so to speak. And I figure once that gets done, I could, you know, move the car in there and the lawn equipment that we have, everything that pertains to the properties, and do it that way.
Okay. And how long has that shed garage been there?
Since 1928.
It looks it, okay.
Yeah.
Christine?
Okay, and the addition is just going to be on, on the right side, looking at the building?
Yes.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
No questions?
No questions.
No questions. Sarah?
No questions.
And no questions?
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? All right, nobody in the audience? Anyone from Zoom? All right, I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. You can either wait or find out in the morning. Okay, okay. All right, that brings us to item number 13, 2 Flamingo Drive.
Yeah, hi, Elizabeth Armstrong here.
Hi, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Mm-hmm, yes and aye.
Okay, and why don't you describe your application?
Okay, we're seeking a variance to replace a pre-existing wooden stockade fence on a corner lot that was damaged by an automobile on April 22nd of this year. That section of fence was replaced about 13 years ago. And the fence along South Gate's been up, it's got to be 15, 20 years by now.
I think a little longer.
Okay. And we're out there and visited, but it has no impact on the corner and site visibility, right? Does it impact, have any impact on, on traffic site on that corner?
Actually, that corner is really unsafe, mostly because people come down South Gate or up South Gate at relatively high speeds. This isn't the first time that there's been an accident on this stretch of road. And it would be nice if we could get a three-way stop sign, but I guess that's probably not you guys.
No, not us. Okay. And the hedges on the corner, I think they're a little high. Can you take care of those?
Yeah, what's, how high are they supposed to be?
I think three and a half feet.
Three and a half feet, yeah. How long do I have to take care of that?
Today's Monday.
Yeah. I'll get them, I'll get them down.
Tomorrow.
Christine?
You watch tomorrow.
And the fence, the fence is going to be pressure-treated wood stockade?
Correct.
Like you're...
That's all, thank you.
Okay.
Art? You mentioned that the traffic on that road is an issue.
It actually really is, but...
Excuse me, do you think your fence is part of that issue? I think that was the question by the chairman. You think that the fence...
Oh, no, because, because this car that hit our fence was coming from the other direction. And this is, yes, this is the second time. This is the second time in, as a matter of fact, I think the bushes helped because since people couldn't see over the bushes, it would make some people be a little more careful about what they're driving into. There's also like a town of Poughkeepsie Great there, and it's been replaced, this is the second or third time since we've lived here. That's how close they come to our property. So whether the bushes help or they don't help, I mean, I guess that's up for discussion, but I think people slow down because they can't see around that corner. But if, you know, if cutting them down you think would be more helpful, but the fence has nothing to do with it.
That was my question.
Because the fence is, yeah, the fence is way inside.
Right. So yes, I think the bushes have to be trimmed, but the fence was my question. Thank you for the clarification. Thanks.
No questions for me.
No questions.
No questions. Larry?
No questions.
Dan?
No questions.
Tony?
No, no questions.
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
I'm sorry?
All right, I don't see anyone in the audience and I don't see anyone on Zoom. So I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to item number 14.
Hey, good night.
And again, you can wait, you can wait for a friend out in the morning.
Ah, good night.
Thank you.
This is 65 Sunset Avenue. Is there someone here? You are the first person here.
What's your name?
My name is Chan Lee.
Mr. Lee, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, what do you want to do?
I'm fixing, see, I was trying to repair my front deck and I have a stop order. And I didn't change anything, I just replaced in the railing and stairs. And the town told me that maybe the previous owner may have changed a little bit. They moved the stairs like in different direction. So they maybe extend the corner like two feet away to the, to the property line. I need a variance to put the stair back, you know?
Okay, so there's a picture that you provided to us that shows a complete porch and stairs?
Yeah, I didn't change anything. I'm going to replace the stairs and the railing, that's it.
Okay, but it'll stay the same?
Yeah, the same, everything the same.
Okay, all right. And what happened to the old stairs?
I'm going to chop it up. It's old.
Okay, they were, they need to be replaced?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
No questions. No questions. Yeah, no questions.
All right, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? All right, there's no one, there's no one in the audience and I don't see anyone on, in Zoom, so I'll move to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries and I move to take that 10-minute break. Any discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. It's, it's 9:00 PM, the board's back in session. We're going to go to this top of the agenda. So that's McDonald's Corporation. What's, what's everybody think about this?
I'd like to see them make the signs smaller, like Diane said, lower.
Let me give you my suggestion and then I'll listen to everybody else. I asked this to adjourn until November because I want to actually see the building and see what the impact and whether it was necessary, in fact. I have a hard time conceptualizing, in my mind, you can see the building as you're driving down Route 9, I could be mistaken. And so if we denied it, if we denied it today, then they'd be at a lock and so I don't want to deny it today. So I'd like to again see, they said they would start construction in September, I think that would give us a better idea about what's going on.
Can I just interject two things? One is I'm not sure that they're going to start construction without knowing that they have a sign facing Route 9, because that's, they've spoken with the planning department about that concern. And the second is that the, if you remember the wall signage, there was no wall signage approved on the Route 9 side of the building. So even if you couldn't see the building, you would not be able to see, you know, there won't be a sign on that side of the building, so just wanted...
All right, but there's a sign on, on the building, on, on the north side.
There's a sign on the south side, on the drive-through side, was there one on the north side?
Yeah, I think there was one on the front.
Just that one was on the north side?
Yeah. So I think that you would see through that space in the trees as, as you came down.
Well, it's, it's going to be harder this spring and summer, it's going to be difficult.
No, those trees are, I don't think...
I've never seen a McDonald's that advertised Wi-Fi.
Right, I don't think they do that.
Oh, that's...
Extra stuff on the sign.
Yeah, that's...
I think that's sufficient, people know, people know they got Wi-Fi, people know they got the cat back.
Yeah, the M is enough, I mean...
But I think the way people use McDonald's today, they would rather know if it's Wi-Fi.
Can you grab your mic, I'm sorry.
I think the way people use McDonald's today, they, they really want to know if it's a 24-hour Wi-Fi place. I think that's a big draw, more than a hamburger. Going for a coffee and having Wi-Fi in a safe place to sit is now what replaced...
I don't think, I think the sign's too busy, if you give a sign, I just think it's too busy.
So do you want to discuss first, does anyone, everyone okay with the sign as a concept before you move on to what the sign should say?
I just want to point out that I remember that they gave up signage on the building on Route 9.
Right, because the county said that, exactly.
But they gave that up and we gave them other signs around the building.
Correct, I mean, they, I think they ended up getting fewer signs than they originally proposed, but they do have an additional wall sign, I don't remember if it was one or two, I think you're allowed one and they got two additional, so, but therefore the interior plaza.
I would be okay with the sign, I just think it's a little busy, but if they could like show an actual sign that meets the requirements of the staff report with like appropriate landscaping and materials, I'd be okay with it.
Yeah, I think that they do show a nice base actually on the, and, you know, so I think if they just put old planting around it, that would satisfy that, that concern. What about the, the letter from the plaza owner, I mean, are you all satisfied with that letter? Because that, that was my one thing, I, I just kind of felt like it literally, I think that's, I, I don't know.
I saw today on the south, on the southern monument sign, or, it, it still says Southside Cafe, which is no longer there, so it's now Laura's and Laura's sign is on the other side, but not on this side, so there's two spaces there, so I...
So does that make a difference to everybody? If, if there, if their lease says, if their lease specifically comments about whether or not they're entitled to space on the existing sign, if that, if it comments and says that they're not entitled to that, to any space, does that change anybody's opinion about the need for the sign?
I would still go with a smaller, less busy sign.
I think it, I think it makes a difference.
That's not the question.
I think it does to me. It what? It makes a difference if it's, we know they can't have a sign, because that building's been repurposed over the years and is the space still used what it was originally, so is there a vacant space on there?
But, you know, as a, as a commercial property owner, I know one of the big draws when I have an empty space is signage. If I have, you know, if that space gets a sign on my main sign, I can, I, I get better clients and I get more offers. So his point, which, you know, I, I don't always buy that it's being totally truthful because they want to convince us of something in that, at the, in the, on that point, but when he said that the signage is, is allotted to specific, not necessarily store names, but to specific square footage and spaces, and even though those spaces right now are either lopped together into two being one or not, or vacated by people, I, I do see where they may have to keep them just for future hopeful, I mean, there could be some truth to that.
I believe that that's possible, I just like some confirmation.
Right, I think that's what, I mean, so your question is then, if, if, if there is never going to be any signage allowed on that main sign, would we be more comfortable with a monument sign?
That's my question. I don't know that they need a sign anyway, I think, I think people know where McDonald's are, I think there's something in their brain that takes them there, but I think they need a sign, but... So it, to me, it doesn't make a difference one way, it doesn't make it any more compelling that they need a, a monument sign than that, but it makes other people admit, so, but it apparently does. So what do you want to do, you want to adjourn it for that, for proof of that, or?
Well, I would rather than hold them up, I mean, I think if the board is comfortable, I could certainly take a look at the lease and you could make, you know, the existence of that condition in the lease be a condition of your variance rather than holding them up to have them submit the lease and then have me read it and say, yes, it's there. I mean, either it's there or it's not. So if that's the condition that the board wants, we can certainly, you know, get a copy of the lease and read it and if it's not there, then they don't meet a condition of the variance and they have to come back. If it is there, then they don't have to come back.
Just to clarify, they will not move forward with the project if they don't get a monument sign.
We haven't been given that as explicit, but that was certainly the implication from the conversations I've had with the attorney and I believe conversations that Mike's had with the advocate.
Actually Kristen had, but yes, that I was, that was...
Or Kristen, yeah.
No, not Chrissy.
Kristen, yeah.
From the plan.
I mean, they're very, the, McDonald's is very adamant about wanting signage on Route 9 and I think it was probably inopportune that they gave up so easily the signage that was on Route 9 that was proposed, but with the trees, I don't know that that would make any difference anyway. And their preference at this point is to have the monument sign because they don't believe that a sign on the building would be visible, so that's their preference. And the board, of course, has the discretion to do as it likes.
So how many people would be in favor of granting a monument sign?
As long as it's a criteria.
For this vote, it's a full board, so no alternates are voting, is that right?
Correct.
No, we do, sorry Simone, sorry Tony.
Wait, but, but I'd like, I do like Art's point about having a sign be less busy.
Because again, I know what you're saying, everybody knows that McDonald's has Wi-Fi, everybody knows it's just McCafee in there, 24 hours doesn't really matter, I don't think anybody's going to care, just go by, they see the light.
That'll be a draw.
That's, that's the biggest thing.
I think you find, most of McDonald's have 24 hours, they're shut down at night and they have business service only.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just was noticing that too. All right, so that's, so that's not the issue, so...
Can we stipulate that it be the 18 inches instead of a 24-inch base?
Yes.
Is that possible?
Did you just say that they can't hear us anymore?
Yeah, so I'm going to...
You're at another hour and a half, by the way.
I will reboot. All right, stay put folks, oh my goodness, all right, leave. Going to assign the Hevranics to be the hosts. This has got to stop though, this thing, got to talk to Tim about this.
Recording in progress.
So is that better for folks? Can you, someone acknowledge that they hear us now? You're all on mute, so I can't hear you.
Yes, that's better.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that, folks.
So Diane, to answer your question from before, we were disconnected, you asked if we could condition that they lower the sign and they indicated that they would be willing to do a sign, a base of 18 inches... willing to do a sign, a base of 18 inches with five foot above it for a six and a half foot total sign. They felt that there needed to be some around the bottom to allow for the landscaping before you saw the sign, but they would agree to 18 inches, so.
I think that's better than two feet.
Yep.
And I don't know that we can comment on the content of their sign.
I said they could do an M.
So, under, it's way too late in the night to be having these conversations, but under the Supreme Court, you're not supposed to talk about the, you know, what's actually on the sign as opposed to the size of the sign perhaps. So the better way to say it would be if you feel that, you know, or the visual clutter, you know, the, the number of words on the sign regardless of what they are. So if you feel, I've heard from a couple of board members that it's, you know, cluttered as, as it looks now, you can request there were dimensions provided for the single color one-letter sign, which could work.
Yeah, we don't have those dimensions in front of us because they didn't, shit, we don't have that in our back-
The sheet that they shared was not part of what was provided to us?
I think it might have been in an earlier version, but it was not in this.
Wasn't it like the difference of a five foot as opposed to a seven? Because like there were measurements-
Yeah.
That showed you just the McDonald's letter.
So, in any event, I think that the board could, you know, based on that piece of evidence which is in the record-
Right.
It was shown whether we actually have a physical copy of it or not, the board could make that, um, the size of the sign, if we're so inclined.
Christine, you want to make a motion?
Sure.
One second here. I'm sorry. I move-
There was a staff report, so.
Yeah, okay, and, and we're conditioning a couple of things?
Yes.
Okay. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number one. This decision is based on review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings in the staff report with the following conditions, that the total sign not exceed six and a half feet.
Is that-
Total, am I, is that my saying that correctly?
Or do we want to say the base be reduced to 18?
Yes.
Well, that's not really gonna do the M, just the M.
Well, that's, it's part two. The first part was, there's been a request from the board members to drop the two-foot solid base before the sign comes, so I think either way, either 18 inches or total sign of six and a half feet.
Okay, approved, okay.
Okay, and, and also that the sign, how might it be limited to the-
The logo only.
The logo only.
Reduced width to the size of the logo, all right?
Right.
As presented. Can I offer two other conditions?
Sure.
One would be just to make sure that we add some landscaping around the base, right, which was in the staff report.
Okay.
And then the third was that the county had asked that we make, make it clear that this is only applying to freestanding buildings in the plaza, right? That this, this exception that we're making is for freestanding buildings in the plaza, not for the-
Right.
The plaza mainline buildings. And I, and I think they were comfortable with that exception, and I think that would be consistent with the county's recommendation.
Including those two, those two conditions that, that-
What he said.
Mike Welte just said. Okay, so move.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Uh, the motion carries. That brings us to item number three. 286 Spackin' Kill Road. This is an application, uh, well, for a pool, a variance for, for a pool of two feet, and the driveway, the extra wide driveway. So let's talk about the pool first. Anyone have any concerns about the pool? It's been there for quite some time, there's fence around the whole building, two feet seems kind of minimus, de minimis. All right, so then, let me offer, oh, there is a staff report on this one. Okay, so, and now what about the driveway? What do you think about that extra part there they put? Can we limit that, can we grant the variance for the driveway that includes that extra parking spot, but just with the condition that, that be not be used as a parking spot? The one that's parallel, that's area that's parallel to Spackin' Kill Road? Do you know what I mean? I mean, that, if it's there as to be used as a turnaround, if people pull in and then come back in there and then come out to Spackin' Kill without backing into it, it shouldn't be used as a parking spot.
Well, how, how do you monitor that?
Well, it's just, well, how do you monitor anything?
And the neighbor, just to throw this in, having read a voluminous amount of comments from the neighbor, one of the things that he's harping on repeatedly is, is having lights in his, in his, on or in his house.
If, if the, it can only operate till 7:00 PM-
Right.
Anyway, so-
Okay, well, it's-
I mean, Bob, what was your point?
No, no, I, I mean, I, I thought it was a valid point if, if it is in fact, that they're gonna be operating at night. Now, maybe in the winter, at seven o'clock, it might be pitch black, okay? And just, you know, in the summer, it's not, maybe not that much of an issue, but I don't, you know, and I don't know what it would, you know, what would satisfy this particular neighbor, but I wondered if something in terms of blocking any of, any of the headlights, you know, by landscaping or something.
Well, there, there is landscaping.
There is some, yeah. But it's a low, I, I think it's a low fence, right, to, to the neighbor, it's only like a-
No, there's-
Doesn't look like a, was that a six-foot fence? It didn't look, it looked like a-
Park yard fence.
Three and a half feet, it was a short fence to-
But there's some, what do you call it, fence or trees and landscaping there.
Well, as you face, as you face the house, he's on the right. He's on the corner of Old Drive.
I mean, can I, how does a driveway get that big? I know we've had a few driveways in here and we haven't even granted them the permission to, they had to move it, they had to tear it up. So why do we-
Right, only because this is a, there's a business going on.
A business, yeah.
You know? If this were just a residence, I, I wouldn't be inclined to grant it. But it, because it's a business, yes, people have to come in for an hour and then leave.
Except that one of the conditions typically of a home occupation is that it not change the residential look of the house. So the, the variance should really not be based on the home occupation. It should be based on the driveway as if it were just a driveway. And they, you can't put in an extra driveway in order to accommodate a home occupation.
Put the driveway in 17 years ago.
According to the evidence that the zoning administrator provided, it seemed like there were a few different additions to the driveway over time.
Parking space piece was put in last year.
Yeah, that one little spot, the little one.
Yep, and then the piece before that was between 2004 and 2009.
Without a permit, or with?
Supposedly they got a, a highway permit, a driveway permit from Highway, but it still would have required a variance.
Well, the curb cut is not, is probably 15 feet.
No, no. The curb cut is 19 feet. It never received a variance, but there's indication-
Says 19.9 on, on their diagram.
Yep. There's indication from, it's, it's not Department of State, County Highway, that whoever the, whoever the road, the people in charge of that road were, they have no objection to that width. But that width actually never received a variance from this board. So, the original driveway that was approved was 15 feet straight back and there have been no subsequent approvals. So everything subsequent to other, everything other than the 15-foot width is what this board's being asked to approve.
While we're discussing this, I think, the reason I'm curious, I guess I get to vote on this one, so I am curious about this. Do you have to delineate actual parking spaces for clients, you know, like by painting them on the driveway, or, or?
Not for home occupation. I mean, I think if we have a, if the driveway gets too small and we start to feel like there's an issue with the adequacy of the spaces, then we would wanna take a closer look at that. We could have an, you know, an engineer or ask them to have somebody show us that you could actually fit the parking spaces that you say are there.
All right.
Right now, I don't think there's any question that there's enough parking, because the driveway's so darn big. But if, if, if we, if the variance, you know, reduces this, if we reduce the size of the driveway, then that could become a question.
Okay, but tied in with that, is there any value to limiting the number of clients they could see at one time?
There is already-
Part get one time.
There is already a limit on that. Um, let's see.
Aren't they ranking out chairs?
They are.
Aren't, wait, didn't they say that at all?
They're allowed to have two non-resident employees and service and instruction shall be limited to no more than five clients or customers at a time. Mike, you're going under C, correct?
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was thinking.
I think they only have three chairs, right?
Yeah, right, I think their, their description talks about it being-
But they do nails.
Yeah.
But that meets the, that meets what's allowed, I guess is my question. If they have three, three clients at one time, plus a couple of employees.
They say they have parking behind the fence, employees in the-
Well, there is a big, like, there's a big stone thing behind the fence, I'm, you know, technically, I guess their employees could park there, they could probably park there if they wanted to, but-
I think that's what they said they did, so.
That is.
Well, how much do you want to shorten it up then?
Then it becomes a dangerous hazard, right?
Well, that and the other thing is how much traffic you want to allow onto Spackin' Kill Road at any one time. There's, there's something in here that I didn't understand when I read Mike's report. There was something about no more than four one-way trips, commercial trips, and I'm not quite sure what that means.
That means if, you don't want UPS to be delivering to the house.
You don't want-
UPS or FedEx or all of those, so the, the customers coming are not commercial trips, I don't think.
Okay, okay, that's what, okay.
I, I read that to, and, I mean, I guess in the first instance, it's really a question for Chrissy, but I read that to be, um, commercial trips being like UPS or FedEx. You don't want, you know, that sort of delivery trucks coming and going in a residential neighborhood.
Right, okay.
Res, personal vehicles, I think, would not impact that.
All right, I mean, I don't, I don't really, I mean, I hate to say this, that I don't care how many parking spaces there are, but I just think you gotta be very clear. I, I, my sense is that this has to be written very clearly, including whatever exceptions there might be, or any conditions.
Could we somehow stipulate that, that customers or cars in that driveway cannot back out onto Spackin' Kill? Because since we've, we're giving them the ability to turn around in that spot that they just created-
That's a good point.
Then it, they are not permitted to enter Spackin' Kill traffic by backing out.
I find that, from an enforcement standpoint, I don't know how the shop owner, I mean, they could certainly tell their customers don't back out, but I don't know if, if a customer were to leave there and back out, I, I don't know how you would, I mean, I would hope if there was room, they would use that room to turn around, but, yeah, I think it would be an enforcement concern to regulate.
Well, that's one of the things the other guy is screaming about, is people going onto Spackin' Kill, and I think there was a description of the hearing, the squealing of brakes, and he also made a point of saying that there's a road directly across from the driveway, which they're more or less his, it's slightly offset from the driveway. So do you guys want to vote? Unrecuse yourselves. Just kidding.
Well, does anybody want to shorten, narrow the driveway?
I don't think we need to.
Does anybody want to, think about that little turnaround spot?
Wait, say that part there?
The turnaround spot there. Want to, want to leave that, or?
I think we just have to stipulate that, that at least we have to go on record to say that that is not to be parked in.
Say that does not count as parking spot, is that?
Sure, I mean, we can say that it's to be used for, you know, vehicle turning only and not for parking.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I would specify something like that.
Okay. All right, then, just wanted, want to make a motion?
All right, so is it two separate for the pool and the driveway, is it one?
So, the short answer is it's two, two variances. One, well, it's probably more than two variances, so why don't we do them separately to keep it clean?
Okay.
Excuse me, and it also says in the, in the staff report that you need to modify as a condition of approval that the hours of operation.
Well, that's on the special use permits, which is a little bit further down the line. So we'll give you the easy one first.
Okay.
Do the area variance for a pool to allow it to be 13 feet from the lot line where 15 is required, so we'll take up the pool.
I'm going to interject one more time, I'm sorry.
Sure.
There's also the seeker. Should we do that first?
We should, thank you.
All right, so we do-
On the driveway?
Uh, well, and the whole, uh, well-
So the special use permit, the driveway's of type two.
Type two.
And the driveway variances are type two. The seeker is for the special use permit.
Never mind that.
Okay. Go ahead, do the variances.
Okay. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number three. This decision is based on review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearings, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth in the staff report.
Yes.
In the staff report, so move.
Hold on.
Um, did you want to make that condition that the, that the one turnaround spot is to be used as a turnaround spot?
This is just for the pool.
This is the pool.
Oh, I'm sorry, then I'm, I wasn't listening to you.
I need a second on the second. Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And there are two recuses.
Okay.
Yes.
So for the driveway, we should, I guess, just legalize the current width of the driveway.
Did the county have a comment on this?
We don't refer, um-
Oh, okay.
Because it's a residential variance, so we don't do it. It's not a business, and we have an agreement that we don't have to refer a special use permit, so the county wouldn't have seen it. So for the driveway, I would just, to legalize the existing configuration of the driveway with the condition that the area added in, close to Spackin' Kill Road be designated
Phyllis, do you mind making some?
No, I took notes.
Okay.
And there is a staff report.
There is.
Okay. Um, I move to approve an area variance request for item number three. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearings, and results of site visit by the board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings, wait, the, the board adopts the findings is set forth in the staff report with the addition of the condition that the area next to Spackin' Kill Road be designated as a turnaround spot and not parking.
So move. Second. All those in favor, just, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And two recuses, just for the record.
And two recuses. That brings us to item number four.
No, it doesn't. You still have to do the special use- No, it doesn't, you still have to do the special use permit.
We said it'd be easy.
So. Oh, right, the hours of operation was one condition. And I would just, for the record, I'd like the board to, um, discuss the requirement that it be attached to the principal, is the, the part of the principal residence. We heard some testimony tonight about, um, the configuration of this garage, so I just want to make sure that the board is comfortable with that, um, condition. And that, um, based, since you've granted the variance for the existing driveway, and you previously found that there was sufficient parking, I think we have, we don't have a parking concern here.
And also the stock and trade.
Yes, okay, so before we do anything, we should do the neg jack.
Should do what?
A negative declaration, because this is an unlisted action.
I move that the ZBA determine that this is an unlisted action appropriate for uncoordinated review and declare itself to be the lead agency.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Alright, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries with two recusals. I move that the ZBA determine that the action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, with reasons set forth in the determination of non-significance for this action.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any oppo, any, any opposed? Then that motion carries.
Okay, now we need someone to do the motion on the special use permit.
And I have another, another question here, it says in the staff report about, have they, have they made an application to the building department?
Yes.
Alright, so all that's been done, so?
They're working on that, yeah.
Okay. That's all.
Alright, you want to do a motion on the special use permit?
Sure.
There is a staff report, so.
No, no.
So we talked about, um, that really they're, they're, any commercial sales are really kind of de minimis, right? They're just kind of ancillary to the, to the hair cutting thing. The testimony from the applicant was that they walk through a door, there's a landing, and then they walk into the garage. Everyone's comfortable that that's, means that the garage is attached and part of the residence?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else we need?
No, and then the only other condition that will be in the motion is that the hours be limited to seven PM, and we're good to go. I think.
What's that?
No.
It goes from, I think, eight AM to seven PM?
They wanted to go until nine PM, so, yeah, eight AM to seven PM, they wanted to go until nine PM.
But we're not granting that.
Correct.
I probably won't, I'll do so well. I move to approve the request for a special use permit set forth in item number three. Uh, this decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony gathered during public hearing, results from site visit by board members, and that it meets the criteria set forth in town code. The approval for a special use permit is subject to the following condition. Hours of, hours of operation are maintained between eight AM and seven PM.
And the first one is also that they have to have a CO, the operation must cease until a CO is issued by the building department.
And operation ceased until?
It's the CO is issued by the building department. Right now, the operation is ceased, but it has to stay ceased.
And I think we should just do, say that the ancillary sales, as long as they're stock and trade, as long as the sales are ancillary to the primary business, they're permitted. So we'll allow that as a third condition. You can just say so moved.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And two recusals.
Okay, now you're done with it.
Alright, that brings us to item number four. Sixteen Bassview Road is an addition to the backyard that requires an area variance of, uh, four feet. This is just an extension of the, it's actually no closure to the side lot line in the existing, um, building. Do they have any, any concerns about this?
Yeah.
So I would make these, offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. This is consistent with the, um, rest of the neighborhood and in fact has a little impact on, on the neighboring properties. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance. Based upon the size of the lot, it's impossible to do this without a variance. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically, um, it's, it has some significance, however, it has less impact to the side lot line than the existing, um, building. Whether proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district, there's no evidence that that will have any, um, effect on the physical or environmental conditions. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it was, but that's not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings. Larry, am I doing a, a motion?
There's no staff report, is there?
No, just rely on those ones I just said.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results, and results of site visits by board members.
Second. Any discussion? Alright, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Two seconds.
Alright.
Alright. Okay, that brings us to item number five, twenty-two Fairmont Avenue. This is, uh, there are two variances, one's for, uh, to legalize the building, and the other one is for a sign. There is a staff report. Does anybody have any concerns about this one? Um, do we need the condition about, um, bringing the hedges down, or just, she'll do that on her own, or?
And also that the base of the sign shall be mounted within a landscape monument of stone brick or other natural material?
That was in my, thank you.
Did you say something about legalizing the building?
Yeah, it's not the building, it's actually the, the, the fact, uh, it's confusing the way it's written, but it's, it's the relationship of the building to the street that means that you can't have, typically, they shouldn't have a freestanding sign.
Right.
Because the building is too close to the street, right? But. But that's-
So we're granting them the freestanding sign, um, two variances to allow the freestanding sign. One to allow it where the building is, the building is not set back more than twenty feet from the front, front lot line, and the second is because the sign is not set back, given the appropriate distance. Okay.
Is this an unlisted action?
It is.
Then. I move that the ZBA determine that this is an unlisted action appropriate for uncoordinated review and declare itself the lead agency.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And I move that the ZBA determine that the action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, with reasons set forth in the determination of non-significance of this action.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? That motion carries. Diane, do you mind doing this motion? There is a staff report.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance, no, for an area variance, is that what it's called, what's it?
Variances.
Yes, it's actually variances.
Area variences. Set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. This is where I say in the staff report, or no, down below.
Stamp, yeah, staff report.
In approving this variance, the board adopts findings as set forth by the-
Set forth in the staff report.
And the staff.
Second.
Any discussion?
Put that condition in or no?
No, it's a condition.
That was suggested, uh, in the staff report.
About the monument sign.
Do we want a monument sign there though, because it's right on the sidewalk and it's-
It's not a monument sign, but I think the base, um-
You think that, want a base like protrude out onto the sidewalk?
That's an interesting question, right, it's right on the sidewalk, isn't it?
Yes.
Actually, then maybe I don't care so much, now that you think about it, yeah.
But should they bring the, should they bring those bushes down?
They're going to, yeah.
Alright. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number six, Seven Brady Plays. This is, uh, well, the applicant has put on a front porch and a, and a rear deck and needs to legalize that. I think, looking at the neighborhood, this is certainly, um, an improvement on the property. I don't think it really has much impact, so. If, if no one has any real concerns about it, I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties by granting the area variance, actually, I think it's going to improve the area of the neighborhood based upon the conditions of the houses in that small neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance based upon the size of the lot, uh, it's impossible to accomplish, accomplish this without a variance. Whether the area, requested variance is substantial, um, mathematically, but not in terms of the overall, um, effect in the neighborhood. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the, or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there's no evidence that will have any impact on the physical or environmental conditions. And whether it is self-created, it certainly is, uh, but that's not a reason in this case to deny the variance, and I would offer those findings. Who's up next? Christine.
Tony.
He's an ultimate on this one.
He's number six. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number six. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, then that motion carries. That brings us to item number seven, Six Mountain View Road. This is an application to, um, for, uh, above around pool for, a twenty-two foot variance, okay? Based upon the testimony of the applicant and our site visits, this is really the only place in her backyard to put it, and I don't really think it's going to have much of an effect on, on anything. Anybody have any concerns about it? Then I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties by granting of the variance, uh, I don't think that it'll have any impact on the character of the neighborhood. There are other neighbors, there are other properties in the area that have pools, and this is pretty well secluded. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance, anywhere in their backyard putting a pool require variance, so no. Whether the requested area variance is substantial. Mathematically it is, um, but, um, in terms of the effect, the backyard is bordered by a fence, and the side yard, uh, on the north side is, is open land, um, and so I don't think it'll have any effect there. Uh, and whether proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there's no evidence before us that will have any physical or environmental impact. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it was, that's not a reason in this case to deny the variance, and I would offer those findings. Alright, do you mind doing this one?
I move that the board approve the request for an area, an area variance set forth in item six?
Sev- seven.
Seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearings, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to number eight, Four Vannick Road. So, here the applicant wants to build a new garage. The testimony is that it's at the same, it, it, there's no impact, it's at the same footprint as the existing garage, so, um, anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Um, do you want to do anything about rainwater?
And don't forget the shed.
I'm sorry?
You have to legalize the shed, too.
What?
The shed has to be legitimized, it's mostly the property.
There's two variances.
Oh, and the shed, okay, okay. Anybody have a problem with that one? Okay, because that, it's way in the back, and it's really far away from everything, so. Alright, then I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. Um, I, I think this is an improvement both for, um, her property and for the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance, based upon the existing footprint of that, of the house, and the fact that the shed has been there for so long, um, I think there's no real, uh, way to do this without a, an area variance. Whether the requested area variance is substantial. Mathematically it is, but because there's no real change in the existence of, of how this has existed for quite some time, I think it's de minimis its impact. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district, there's no testimony or no evidence that, uh, there'll be any physical or environmental can, uh, impact. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it was, but that's not a reason to deny the free variance, and I would make, I would offer those findings. Phyllis, do you mind doing this one?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number eight. Uh, this decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and the results of site visits by the board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair, so moved.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number nine, that Seventy Wood Lawn Avenue. The applicant wants to extend a deck. There are two variances here, uh, the one really that, um, is affected by the addition is the one of the, of the addition. It's still within, although it's closer to the side lot line, it's still within, um, it's the building's side lot line. And so I don't think it really has much of an effect. There's a fence all around the back property, um, I, I don't see that it has any, any real problem. Anybody have any concerns? Okay, then I'll, I'll offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be reduced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. This extension of the deck, um, although it encroaches on the, um, side lot line more than the existing deck, um, it's still less than the existing building, and so I don't think it will have any change in the character of the neighborhood. There are other buildings in the neighborhood that are similarly situated. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance, based upon the size of, and width of the lot, it's impossible to do anything without a variance back there. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically it is, however, because it has less of an impact on the side lot line than the existing building does, I think that, um, it, it's kind of minimal. Whether proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there's no evidence that will have any physical or environmental impacts. And, um, this, while this was a self-created problem, that's not a reason to deny- reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings. Tony, do you mind doing this motion?
It's just one, huh?
Well, there's actually two, I think it's just making the, both sides of the deck, but it, it's really just the addition, but you can...
Just throw those on.
Is that all right? Christine?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
No staff report.
No, why don't we just do my findings?
Okay.
Ones I just went through.
Paul's, Paul's findings.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number nine. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of applicants, testimony offered in public hearing, and results from site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the chair. I so move.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? Then all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number ten. Lisa, let me ask you this. Let's say this was denied, and he wanted to put the pool equipment on this driveway side that's still in the front yard. Is he barred from, he can still, he can make a new application?
He can't make an application for a similar, you can't, basically, you can't ask for the same thing you just got denied, but if it's different, if it's a proposed new location for the pool equipment, he can come back for that.
Okay. So, what's everybody thinking about this one?
I think he needs to move it. He's got plenty of room.
I mean, that picture the neighbor shows, I mean, it looks ridiculous. He wanted to put it as far away from his house as possible.
You got a pool, you're gonna get the noise.
It's the luxury of the pool.
Yeah, I think he, he just didn't want to see it, or, you're right.
If he leaves it where it is and fences it in, I mean, the fence is already there, it's just going to be a bug bounty.
But the noise.
Yeah, my concern is that it's so close to the roadway, I mean, almost any place he's going to put it is going to be in the front yard, basically, because he's on a corner lot. But my concern is, because it is so close to the roadway, that even with screening, it's still going to be a problem, and so, I think he can ask to go someplace else. So...
I mean, this is really self-created.
This one really is self-created.
I mean, you put a pool, and you should really find out, you know, especially since there are other pools in the area, so, must have some clue.
Okay. So, I'm going to offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance, the granting of the pool equipment in this location in the front yard, even with a fence, or perhaps in addition to the fence, I think will be an undesirable addition to the neighbor, to the character of the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance, the pool did have the pool equipment in an area that didn't require a variance. So, it's possible that he could put it back where it was, and not, and not need a variance. There's still room behind the house where it doesn't need a variance. So, I think there are other ways that he can achieve the pool equipment without a variance. And whether the requested area variance is substantial, it certainly is, it's not allowed in the front yard. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, I don't think that there's any evidence that will have any particularly great physical or environmental impact. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, of course, this was self-created, and I think that's, I think that's a reason, additional reason to deny the variance. And so I would ask, I would offer those findings. Larry?
I move that the board deny the request for an area variance set forth in item number ten. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results, and results of site visits by board members. In denying this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of denying the variance, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed to denying the variance? Then the motion is, the motion carries, and the variance is denied. Okay. That brings us to item number eleven, Seven Thirty-Six Duchess Turnpike. All right, so this is a request for a area variance of five feet, nine inches for an addition. The testimony was that it's not going to stick out any farther than the existing part of the building, and in fact, there's a retaining wall that goes even closer to the side lot line that they said they were going to remove. Do we need to make, is anybody concerned about making that a condition of... Actually, I don't know. I think their house might get hit if they get, getting wall off by, after them. Anybody having concerns about this one? Then I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance, there's, should be no impact, there are other buildings similarly situated in the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance, based upon the size of the lot, it's impossible to do any addition without some impact, or without requiring a variance. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, not even really mathematically, and certainly in light of the fact that it's not extending any farther into the side lot line than the existing part of the building. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district, there's no evidence that it will have any impact on the physical or environmental conditions. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created is true, but that's not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings. Diane, do you mind making this one?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number eleven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
All right, any discussions? All right, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number twelve, Fifty-three Violet Avenue. This is an application for, to extend an existing garage two feet from the property line, requiring a variance of eight feet. Does anybody have any concerns about this one? So, then I'd offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance, there's, right next door is a similarly situated property, and it's consistent with the neighborhood as a whole. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance, there's no way to, for the applicant to achieve his desired result without a variance. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically it certainly is substantial, however, in light of the fact that the existing garage building has been there for many, many years, and the distance to the next neighbor's building, I think it's really, has a very minimal effect. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there's no evidence that it will have any effect there. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny this application, and I would offer those findings. Christine, do you mind?
Third time through the batting order.
Yeah.
Don't do that too often.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number twelve. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, then that motion carries. That brings us to item number thirteen, Two Flamingo Drive. This is to repair a damage to an existing fence. Anybody have, excuse me, any concerns about this one?
I'd just like to add that your suggestion that they lower their hedge, because that does block the intersection. The hedge.
Well, it's, it's the law.
Just that, you do that, right?
Yeah, okay. All right, anybody else have any concerns? All right, then, I'll offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance, this fence has existed there for quite some time, and should have no impact on the character of the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance, there's no way to do this without an area variance based upon the position in the house and the fence. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically it is, but in terms of the actual sighting of the fence, it's really kind of minimal. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there's no evidence that it will have any physical or environmental impacts. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which in this case is true, but not a reason to deny this application. I would offer those findings.
Do we have to say anything about, we're allowing, because he's replacing an existing fence that's been there forever? The fence height, I mean, because it's oversized.
Well, I mean, you're granting a variance to replace, to that, you know, the decision is going to say it's replacing an existing fence.
Just to be sure.
You're up.
Thanks. I move that the board approve the request for an area, area variance set forth in item number thirteen.
Thirteen.
This decision is based on a review, a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Second.
All right.
With the condition that they lower the height of the fence, or the hedge.
Well, that they come into compliance, that they come into compliance, I'm not... Of the hedge. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that should be done later in the day, right? All right, that brings us to item number fourteen. This is a request for a variance for a front porch, requiring a variance of two feet. Anybody have any concerns about this? Okay, so I'm going to offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance, this is the replacement, or rebuilding, or repair of an existing front porch and steps, so it should have no effect on the character of the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance, based upon the sighting of the building and the size of the lot, it's impossible to accommodate this without an area variance. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, it's a two-foot variance, it's de minimis. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there's no evidence that it will have any physical or environmental impact. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was, that's not a reason to deny this application, and I would offer those findings. Phyllis?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number fourteen. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and the results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the finding as set forth by the chair. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us finally to item number fifteen. There's a request from the planning board to be lead agency, and so I, I move that...
You don't want a long description of the project?
Well, we have some time. So, I move that the planning board be the lead agency on all space storage facility expansion.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? That motion carries, and then I move to adjourn.
Why? Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.